I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Thursday, March 7th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members can be remote or in person and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. For tonight's meeting, all members are present in the room, which means we do not have to roll call vote tonight, so during votes, we can just say aye or raise your hand. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments will be invited to do so during the public comment period of tonight's meeting and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments. If anybody would like to provide comments during the public comment meeting, I will provide more detailed information at that time. Okay. So, moving on to the first items on the agenda are to approve the meeting minutes from February 15th, 2024, regular meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or edits for the regular meeting minutes? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Thursday, February 15th, 2024?
So move DeLuca.
And can I get a second?
Second, Persia.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. All righty. Next up is approving the workshop minutes from February 15th, 2024. And I would like to make a motion to postpone these for a vote at a subsequent meeting. I do have some, I did some notes that I wanted to pass along and wasn't able to do so before tonight's meeting. So can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call, oh, not roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And next up are the executive session minutes from February 15th, 2024. Does anybody want to hold these for discussion in a future executive session? Okay. All righty. And so our options then are to approve and release at this time or approve and not release at this time. Does anybody want to make a motion either way?
I move to approve and release the minutes of February 15th.
So moved. Okay. And can I get a second? So you, second? Yeah. All right. That's great, all right.
I was like, oh, is that what we say? I gotta go now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So next up is a vote to approve an out-of-state trip. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. I am going to... Oh, that's not the one, sorry. I'm on number four, you're on number three. Eastern Middle School Show Choir. They have a proposal for the choir to go to Bishop Hendrickson High School in Warwick, Rhode Island to perform their second year in a, in a row at the Little Roadie Rumble. It's a competition that has middle and high school students from all over New England. And I believe Mr. Cook is here remotely to present. Oh, okay. Okay. He is not yet here, so you could table this until he comes if you have any questions that you would like him to address.
Is this during the day? Do we know?
It looks like it's the whole day, Friday, March 23rd.
The whole day, okay.
I mean, that's what it looks like to me from this thing. I don't know.
Does anybody else have any questions or any thoughts on whether or not you're comfortable moving ahead with the vote, given the information that we have?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the out-of-state trip for the Eastern Middle School Show Choir, Image, to travel to Rhode Island on Friday, March 22nd for a competition?
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And thank you to Mr. Cook for bringing that forward to us and good luck to Image at the competition. You have a great time. Next up is a discussion and vote to approve a foreign exchange company. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So this one, I will kick over to Mrs. Pruitt. Mrs. Kavanaugh received a request for, from a family that would like to host a foreign exchange student. School committee policy requires that they're vetted through a professional organization. Mrs. Pruitt has looked into that and she has an update for you.
Sure. Thank you so much. So according to the school committee policy, it is proper for the school committee to approve the foreign exchange program. So this program is called the Northwest Student Exchange Program. It is certified through, endorsed, sorry, by the Council on Standards for International Education Travel, which is a prerequisite for, in our policy, and the acronym is C-S-I-E-S-T, because we need another acronym in our life. And here to join us this evening is Zoila. Did I say that correctly?
You said it correctly. Zoila.
Rosario. And she will be sharing with you about the program and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. So Northwest Student Exchange is a nonprofit organization. We have been working with exchange students for the past 32 years. We place students in all United States. I'm actually the Vienna manager for the East Coast. And we do have a local coordinator that is assigned to that state and area. And we have a family, which I don't know if I can, I can mention the last name, and it's a family that is sewn on your, on the school, on your school district. So we're today here looking for an approval, so we can actually place a student with this family that is looking for where, who hosts these students from Germany.
So, so it's Germany. Do we know what grade the visiting student would be in and when?
It would be for next year.
Next year, okay.
And I believe the student would be a sophomore. Is that correct?
I believe so. We don't, I don't have yet a complete application. I don't have the grade, but it will be for the, starting the next fall for the school year '24, '25.
And is it a one-to-one exchange? Like, do, we don't have a student going there?
Reciprocal, no.
Okay. All right. So how do we manage the costs associated with that?
There are no costs for Eastern Public Schools.
Okay.
And we do, we do, do a vetting process where we do a background check to our families and also the local coordinator who's going to be working with the student. Of course, we do follow the guidelines of the Department of State. And we do do a whole vetting process with the family. Then they receive also orientations from our organization, how to manage having an exchange student in their home, a new family member. We also work with the counselor. And we do monthly checks with the school, the family, and the student.
And the reason why we don't directly just work with a family hosting, why we go through a program, is that the pro, the student needs a J-1 visa that is sponsored by an organization. And as a school district, we do not sponsor J-1 visas.
Okay. Yeah, we had a, we had an exchange student a few years ago. Was it pre-COVID?
It was.
Right. Okay.
We've done a few exchanges with AFS.
Okay.
Okay.
That, I remember we had somebody who was on a hockey team. It was a nice, nice addition to the team.
Yeah.
We don't recruit kids.
No, not recruiting, no.
No, no. Never mentioned that.
Happened to have earned a spot on a team that had plenty of room.
Yes, okay. Do any committee members have, have any questions?
I'm just curious, so it, so this student, although no cost, it's a, a new student to our district. Okay.
So the student will be counted in our enrollment numbers, which essentially are helpful with DSC.
And there's no challenges in terms of like, the lunch that's been provided and things like that? The, the state would still count them as another enrollment and we're?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good question.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Would somebody then like to, so let me just, let me see, so we are, so the motion is to approve CSI, no, the motion is to approve Northwest Student Exchange as a foreign exchange company for the district. Gotcha, okay. So, would somebody like to make a motion to approve Northwest Student Exchange as a foreign exchange company for the district?
So moved.
Okay. And can I get a second?
Luca, second.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
All righty. So the next up is a vote to approve the OA program of studies. Dr. Cabral?
Mrs. Kavanaugh is here this evening and she is going to set up her presentation on the program of studies. You may want to move to the audience. Are you ready for me to begin? Yeah, thank you. This is always one of my favorite times of year because I get to stand in front of you and present to you the ways in which the high school continues to incorporate student voice and choice into our program of studies, continues to look at ways that we make sure that all students have equity of access and that we're being inclusive in the work that we do every year, and at the same time, still providing rigorous learning experiences in college and career readiness opportunities for our students, which is a continuous journey and goal for us, as you know from our school improvement plan. I'm going to go through a series of changes to the program of studies with you. And then at the end of that, I do have an update on our first school improvement goal, which is our, review of our schedule. So in terms of the program of studies, there's going to be five topics that I'm going to cover with you. These are them, just so you can kind of see the agenda for the evening. And to start, I'd like to talk about early college and dual enrollment. So we are changing one section of our program of studies, which you may have seen in your packet. It used to say, "Credits for courses taken outside the Oliver Ames Program of Studies." And that was really focused on dual enrollment or for students who take courses outside of what's in our program of studies. But that's changing as we move towards more early college opportunities for our students. So we've replaced it with this, which describes the two different ways in which students concurrently earn college credit while attending OA. The first is through early college courses and the second is dual enrollment. As you'll see in the last sentence of the dual enrollment, the primary difference is dual enrollment is when a family chooses to reach out to a college, enroll their student, and then formulate a schedule so that they take courses at, let's say, Bridgewater State that also count for credit towards their OA graduation credit, right? So their one year of English might be taken at Bridgewater State, but they're enrolled in that college. Early college is done through the school. So we partner with other colleges. We partner with our consortium to provide opportunities for early college. And it looks, it's, it's presented in two ways. One, we're really fortunate this year, for the first time, we've been able to offer one of our current courses for college credit, that's French 5. And we are currently in the process of getting several other teachers approved to be adjunct professors at Middlesex. So potentially, we could have English courses that are taught here where students are taking our curriculum but earning college credit through Middlesex. We're also doing the same thing through Syracuse University. So the one piece of the, the program of studies that I will need to update you on later is once all of those applications go through, which courses are actually offered for college credit and which aren't. We're still waiting to hear back from those colleges. Do you guys want me to ask you for questions at the end or after every section? Does it matter?
Yeah, I think we can maybe hold till the end.
Great, that'd be great. Okay. So the next section is the new courses we're offering this year. So first, I'm really excited about this course in business and applied arts. We would like to offer students an opportunity to go outside of the building for internship experiences. So this is both an in-class and an out-of-school opportunity for students. It's a career-focused experience where, right now, the way we have it scheduled is that it's going to be for five credits, so it's a full-year course, but it's going to meet for two consecutive blocks in one semester. So it's still five credits, but it gives them the opportunity, when those two blocks meet, to get out of the building and go to their internship, which we've never tried before in the past, and I'm really excited. I think it's the solution to getting kids out of the building. On top of that, in their in-class experience, it'll be resume writing, cover letter writing, how to successfully look for jobs, college, I mean, career exploration, as well as interview skills. So it's a, it's a combination of the internship and the course. The next section is music and performing arts. So Mr. Benson, the head of our department, sent a survey out to students this year back in December, asking what they would be interested in taking, as we try to increase enrollment in our arts courses. And the courses that came up as the top choices for students were songwriting and the history of American pop culture, which is the, the music of the 21st century. So those are two new courses we'll be offering.
Can I interject or add hopefully to this? One of the conversations that I've had with the music department is about adding electives for students who have an interest in music, but maybe, may not have played an actual instrument or know how to read music and not be in an ensemble, as there are obviously many more opportunities within the arts and performing arts and music in particular. And so this is exciting because it does open that scope and range of students to explore different aspects of music other than the stereotypical playing of the instrument, which is wonderful, but there's just so much more to offer students. And it exposes, we're hoping, a whole new population to music in particular.
And these are in addition to the two new courses we offered last year, which are open to students who don't play a specific instrument as well, so that's great.
And obviously, students that play an instrument can also partake, but it's more universal and broad in nature.
Yeah. I just have one quick question.
Yeah, please.
So I'm noticing, I noticed this earlier, songwriting and history of American popular music, are they five credits?
Yes, they're year-long.
So it just needs to be added in there?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
For that. I'm actually making note of that. Wonderful. And then, this is a really exciting change. So in the past, we've had an adaptive music class, which is a music class that's geared towards special education students to explore instruments. If you've been to our concert last year, they performed in our concert. But one of the things we've been talking a lot about is the, the goal of, of bringing our, our students who are in sub-separate programs out of their classroom is to experience the curriculum with like peers. So we're changing this model to be a unified music class, similar to our unified PE class. So it'll be both general education students and special education students learning to play music together, learning about music, about dance, and then, and then performing in our concerts. In social studies, we have one addition to in our electives. And this is a, a course that really focuses on civics and global competency in looking at histor, our history, the different movements that have impacted our social identity and throughout the world, and different social movements and the impact that they've had. Okay. So the next section is the course updates and removals. Excuse me. The first is in our visual arts department. Our elective courses that are a semester were nine to 12 in the past, and we're moving that to 10 to 12 for enrollment numbers to, to be something that upperclassmen take. And also, because they're semester, it's more difficult for ninth graders to take them because they don't really have many semester courses in their schedule, which makes more sense. And then in science, you'll see in the course description of these two courses, CP, conceptual physics and biology were both at the CP2 level. There was a statement that said this course is designed for students who do not plan to attend a four-year college, something I didn't notice until this year. These courses do cover the standards at the college preparatory level, and we would never put a ceiling on a student's ability level in our course description, so we want to remove those statements. In special education, this is a simple move. These three courses were under the special ed department because, but because they meet the graduation requirements for science, math, and English, they actually belong under those departments. So we're moving foundations of science under science, foundations of math under the math department. And those, yeah, those, those credits go towards the graduation requirement in those areas. World language, the French IV, V, and Spanish, I should say V honors, I apologize for that. They all said that they required the SAT II, but many students don't take that anymore. It's not really applicable to college applications and we don't require it. So we removed that. Not that the students couldn't take it if they wanted to, that option is still there for them. And then rather than having different travel experiences for each language, we're just having world language travel experience as one. It's, it's still, still students can earn two credits, it's still the same process that we've always had, but it just opens it up to, in case we ever wanted to offer a trip that didn't fit under those course descriptions we had, which were Spanish and French, now we just have a, a general travel experience option. In social studies, we've collapsed, the CP2 and the honors course descriptions were exactly the same. So Mr. Auger asked to just collapse them down so that it's just less cumbersome in the, in the program of studies. We have updated the human geography course to an honors course. And we've removed the applied learning project just for this year. It's going to run every other year for juniors and seniors. I might have mentioned that to you last year. We opened it to juniors last year and now we're going to run it every other year for both grades, so all stu, upperclassmen do have the opportunity to take it. And then there are two courses, contemporary issues and US foreign policy, which consistently do not have high numbers and with, from student feedback, if they're not something that students are looking to take right now, which is why we've added some other electives, the human geography and the facing history. And then finally, community service. I'm going to give you a little bit of history of what community service is and the reason that we're asking to remove it from the program of studies. So in community service, students are assigned during one block of their day to a staff member to help with tasks such as photocopying, collating papers, organization. And we really feel that it doesn't meet the rigorous learning experience to earn four credits that we really value as a school. And we're adding a lot of additional opportunities for students to do more career and, and college exploration. The internship class, last year, we offered two additional senior project classes, both in engineering and manufacturing, as well as the applied learning process, project, that we see those as being more beneficial to students in terms of preparing them for the real world and more focused on our goal of really looking at readiness for the future in earning credits at the school. Do you have any questions on that one?
I, I do have some questions on it. I, I'm struggling with the applied learning project.
Yeah.
Only running every other year.
Yeah.
It's just, I had kids go through it. It was an incredible experience for them, literally like career-changing.
Yeah.
And I've watched other kids have the same experience. Why wouldn't we run it every year?
Well, enrollment numbers have gone down the past two years. They've been under 15. And it is really a course that we want to see a good group of students working together and sharing with each other. So by opening up to juniors and seniors, we're hoping to see those enrollment numbers grow. Last, and then last year, this year, we have about 13 students in it. So every other year would create like a more, more robust experience for them. And, and also would be the opportunity for other courses to be offered. That, you know, when we think about enrollment numbers, right? We want to offer courses that have a good percentage of our students interested in taking them. And we, we try not to run courses that run really low on numbers because we want to make sure all kids get access to the courses that they're interested in. So the hope is that we'll be able to, these other electives and stuff that we're offering, students can take those one year and the applied learning another year.
And since, sorry. In terms of the experience, like some of the other courses that are even offered versus applied learning.
Yeah.
Applied learning really gives them a chance to explore outside the lines of a normal class. And I, I really struggle with this one because I've seen kids really explore alternative career paths and all kinds of other things that wouldn't have normally even offered through the program of studies.
There's, every student has an opportunity still to take it though, because it's now being, it was only for seniors. So offered every year just to seniors. Now it's offered every other year to juniors and seniors. So every student still has an opportunity to take it, either their junior year or their senior year.
But isn't junior year packed? Like, it's very hard for a kid who's trying to get through all of the APs and everything they want for a college application process to also have time to take this, isn't it? Or are you getting?
They pretty much have room for one elective, so this would be their elective. And this year, it's, I want to say it's probably four out of the 13 kids are juniors?
It's more of a package deal too, in the sense that this is not live in isolation.
Yeah.
The AP courses are actually getting, across the country, a little less popular. A lot of colleges are not actually accepting those credits anymore, or they're, they're accepting higher scores on it, which is why we're bringing in the dual enrollment and the...
Early college?
Early college. Opportunities for students. So they will have those opportunities too, junior and senior year. So it's, if you look at it in totality, it actually is providing more opportunities for students. Particular to career exploration, pre-college work. But we love your point because that shows that this is an embraced activity, that we do want to continue to offer that to students.
Yeah, it really is. I, I, this is a hard one, I think, because I, I do think, I think a lot of kids have got a ton of value out of it.
No, and I appreciate the school committee's support. You approved two other senior, junior, senior project courses last year too. So we now with internship, applied learning project, and the two other ones, we have four different opportunities for students to explore outside of school in coursework. It's good, it's, I really appreciate your support and I understand where you're coming from. Okay, so the last, the next section's on senior privileges. This is a new course that I would like to offer, although it's not credit-bearing. And essentially, it provides students in good standing with the ability to carry, seniors, I should say, not students, the ability to carry a reduced course load. So instead of carrying seven classes, they'd be able to carry six classes. It's an application process because they have to be in good standing, which means good attendance, discipline, and, I'm forgetting, oh, conduct, and grades. And it, so they, they would apply for the, the experience, and the next slide goes into a little bit more details about it. So seniors, what would happen is seniors would have a period that's considered their privilege block. It's an opportunity, this is kind of like the, what does it look like? If, they would have designated areas throughout the school where they can be during this senior privilege time. When they have their privilege block, as long as they have a parent permission slip, it would allow them to arrive to school late in, after the end of first block or the, before the beginning of second block, I should say, and it would allow them to leave school when their senior privilege is last period without penalty. And if, if students fall out of good standing, we do have like designated locations or students can enroll in a different course. And these are some of the nearby schools that use senior privilege. And there's, there's many more, but I picked ones that are nearby or Dart schools for us. I'd like to share a little bit of the why next, and I can answer more questions about the, the what. So, one of the most important things we can do as a school is prepare our kids for college, right? Most of our students go to college, over 80%. If not, they go to career or the military. In high school, students are structured for 30 hours a week, and then they go to college and they're structured for 15, and they have to figure out how to manage that time. I really think that increasing our seniors' independence and giving them this opportunity is going to bring greater social, emotional learning skills in terms of self-management, self-advocacy, organization skills. On top of it, the pressure that seniors express to us in terms of getting college applications done and their college essays, outside of school with all their other obligations, this provides opportunities for them to meet with their counselor during the day and not have to miss class time, which then puts them further behind. They can navigate the college application process, complete their applications during this time and scholarship process. And also, we can, we can give them support during the day in searching for jobs outside of school, getting their work permits done during the school day and not after school, and, and just finding a way to manage your time independently before they go off to school and they, and they have never done it before, especially with a high course load. Now, not every kid would take this. Many of our high-achieving students are going to take their seven courses, and then there are many students who are going to need to take their full seven course load. But this opportunity provides them that time and space to build those independent skills. On top of it, which is somewhat, is definitely secondary to that, but it is a motivator. In a time where absenteeism is an issue, students who don't come to school cannot take this, cannot take this opportunity. Students with poor conduct cannot take this opportunity. And when, and as we're going through junior year, which is one of the toughest years, it encourages you to get to school every day, which is going to help you lead to success. And then in senior year, when you start to get what we call senioritis sometimes, it gives you that motivation to continue to keep your senior privilege. But, but I want, to be honest with you, I want the, the students to be able to share their perspective too, because I've talked to a lot of students about this as an opportunity. And Braylon and Marvel, you're going to come up too, are going to come up now and just share with you their perspective on, on including senior privilege in our, in our course studies.
While they are approaching the front of the room, I just wanted to add that this also touches upon our strategic plan efforts to really focus on enrichment opportunities for students. We have a lot of great interventions and programs and supports for students that are having difficulty, and we have historically had less for students who are excelling and have the opportunity to get enrichment, and this is a perfect example of that.
Perfect.[1790.77]
Perfect. So Franklin Chen, who's also a member of the student advisory board, who's a junior, couldn't make it today, but he also wanted to have a say in this. I am specifically talking about career advancements. He says that seniors who have earned senior privilege are capable of tackling on an important next stage of life after high school, managing free time. Careers in college especially open a lot of extra free time, and being able to effectively use this time is a big difference maker. Many use this time to learn another skill, plan a big trip, or even start a personal project. Sorry. In order to achieve these personal passions, students must know how to manage time. An open block in their last year of high school can help accomplish this, giving them a small-scale version of the mass amounts of free time they will likely have. They can see how they currently spend free time more clearly. I never realized how much time I wasted until the weekends, when it ended, and I felt like I did not get anything done, and are given the whole school year to improve in all still controlled environment with plenty of help and support.
From my perspective, as a student at Oliver Ames and a member of the Active Minds chapter, a club dedicated to de-stigmatizing mental health and expanding awareness regarding mental health, I feel senior privilege would be an opportunity to support the mental health of the students here at Oliver Ames. By providing seniors with an opportunity for senior privilege, students soon choose to use this time in various ways, including taking a very simple break, which oftentimes students need. This time of the day would allow students to take a step back from the stress of courses and their everyday lives and use this time as they would like. Not only does this feel like a weight lifted off the shoulders of students, but provides a further sense of freedom that many people are seeking, especially during senior year. And these students, soon to graduate Oliver Ames, are going to be learning, learning how to manage their freedom, and this is a quality learning experience. In addition, it can be a time of reflection and a time to decompress if that's how students would wish to use it. Another positive for students applicable for senior privilege is allowing these students to use this time to get work done and minimize homework. As a result, the time from homework, time saved from homework and time used to reset after a long day of school would open up various opportunities to students, including social time and sports, which is crucial to people, especially seniors, who are going to be moving on to college or other activities after school, which is important to have these skills. Considering the workload of some students, this could be an open opportunity for extracurriculars that students, that prioritize academics, would previously not have. In addition to completing work, from my experience of staying up late, studying, and preparing for an exam, students would now be provided with the flexibility to study during school in an environment of their choosing. It can be a way for students to be productive and avoid late nights and rigorous studying. Getting sleep is crucial for all students, their mental health, and their ability to perform well in school, on exams, and also having the energy to partake in social activities, clubs, and sports.
And then although it is called senior privileges, we did want to highlight that it doesn't only affect the seniors, it also affects the younger grades. So it does, yes, it directly benefits the seniors, but it motivates and incentivizes students of younger grades, from freshmen to juniors. Thus, both mental health and the career collegiate advancements that we recently talked about indirectly transcends to younger grades, as students are now working to become eligible for this course. Overall, students are equitably given a plethora of opportunities that expose them to greater advancements. And once again, in acknowledging that the seniors are the only class of students that can partake in this course, it is rewarding and refreshing for younger students to identify the intensive work legible students put into school, and ultimately sets a precedent of peer motivation and consistent work efforts. And it is also scientifically proven that peer motivation does influence other students of all other grades and generations, much more than just a teacher telling them to do their homework, et cetera. That's all we had. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you to Franklin for the time you spent with me talking about this and processing it and then presenting. I'm truly thankful to both of you. So I'm, that's the end of senior privileges. Next, we're moving on to graduation credits. Okay. So the last change in the proposal, rather, in the program of studies is to change the total number of credits required to graduate from 130 to 120. So the course requirements stay the same, four years of English, four years of math, three of science, that's all that, all that that's in the beginning of the program of studies. And it is still required that students take a full course load of 30 credits each year, with the exception of seniors, if senior privilege passes, that can take 30. We're looking to update the course, the course recommendation and enrollment process to the statement that's there in quotes, which, as the seniors in good standing are permitted to carry 30. So the reason why we want to do this is we have students in our school who meet times of struggle, whether it's mental health or physical health, and either they don't, they aren't able to pass their courses, or they have to reduce their course load to add time in bridge or in other supports during the school year. That then reduces the number of credits that they take in a year. In order to do that, they do get a waiver from an administrator to take less than 35 credits in a year. So when they get to their junior or senior year, now they're not meeting the 130 credits we require for students to take. So they're taking courses over the summer. So these are students who have already struggled, and they're taking courses over the summer, and they're taking courses outside of school in order to meet the 130. Again, I'm not looking to reduce the rigor of our course work every year. Students are still required to take that full course load and meet our graduation requirements. This is in line with our values around equity and access for all kids. And in a time where we continue to see hospitalizations, whether that's for concussions or for mental health or physical health, that's impacting students' ability to take a full course load, we're now kind of handcuffing them to meeting the 130 in four years, and they're not able to graduate in four years. The next slide shows you, these are all of our DART schools in local districts. So I want to explain this chart so you understand. Everybody counts a full-year course differently in credits, right? We count it as five, but as you see, Marshfield counts it as four, and KP counts it as one. So what I did is I took the number of credits awarded per each full-year course, the total number of credits required to graduate, and what I'm comparing is the number of courses students have to take in that last column in order to graduate. And as you can see, Oliver Ames is at the top. So we require students to take more courses than most high schools, all high schools in our DART and our, in our local high schools. So by reducing that, we're asking to reduce it down to 24. So it gives a little bit more wiggle room of two courses, again, not required courses. Students still need to take the, I believe it's 70, does that sound right, Dan? Do you know, 70 credits of required courses to graduate, but that gives them some time and space, if in times of struggle, to drop a course if needed and still meet the 130. And I, and just, you know, Dan Fitzgerald, one of our school councils, is here, and he's open to answering any questions that I can't regarding how this works in terms of graduation, program of studies, and, and any, any other, any other transcript questions that you might have.
Just for the audience, DART schools are the schools that the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education chooses to compare Easton Public Schools to in terms of academic achievement for our students.
So the DART schools are the ones with the stars?
Yes, asterisks for, yes. And then the others are our immediate borders, I believe.
Yes, there are borders, and there's a few others that I polled.
In addition.
In addition, I polled all the principals. We have a job like group of like 50 or 60 principals, and I polled them. So I polled some of the other districts that are, you know, within 20 miles from us that replied to me. That is the whole program of studies. I want to just take a moment to thank the staff and students for all of their input, whether it's through surveys, individual conversations with me, and the thoughtfulness that they put behind this work every year. Our school counseling department has been excellent. I've been with Mr. Fitzgerald and Ms. Minkuso on a regular basis as we talk through all of these changes and make sure that we look at everything with an equity lens, which is, you guys know, is really important to our district. Any questions?
I have a question on the internship piece. First of all, I have a comment. Community service, I'm sure some teachers will miss having the support.
Yeah.
At the same time, I think seniors took it for relief. And they took it to be able to get a little bit of a break and take, in a senior year. I am thrilled with the change to senior privilege. I think the commentary, I think, I appreciate the thoughtfulness around that. I think the commentary on learning how to use that time and learning what you can and can't do during that time is a really important skill for college that many of them don't have, because they're used to being so scheduled and quite frankly, overscheduled in terms of what they sign up for. So I think it's a brilliant way to make a transition for the kids and really thoughtful in terms of how to move in a more modern direction for how kids need to operate and work and think in a time when you can be very distracted with things like devices.
Thank you.
So I think it's fantastic. The internship sounds amazing. I'm just curious, two blocks is like an hour and a half? So they're able to leave the campus, go to an internship, and come back during that window. Do we know of local businesses that are going to give them the opportunity to do that? Like, how will that work out, especially with the rotating block federal?
We, and I'm going to let, other people have been here before me, but we had this course a while ago, and we actually had a lot of people placed within the district. So whether it was in the business office, at elementary schools, and that's part of our goal, is to keep it on campus.
The daycare program.
Yeah, the daycare program, things like that. That's, and then if students want to, the students will work with the internship coordinator to see if there's opportunities off-campus. The only piece of that that's challenging is that they have to then be able to get there and back, right? So that's why we want to make sure that the on-campus opportunities are robust and meet the needs of the diverse interests of our students. And I was fortunate enough, when I used to work in Canton, we had a senior externship project, and it was all within, a lot of it was within the school district, and you'd be amazed how many things that you can find just on campus here for them to do that meets their career and college goals. So that's our, that's our plan. And we will start internship somewhat small this year, as it's our first year. And then as we continue to grow placements, we can increase the size since we don't need to have a classroom space that seats with 60 people, because they're going to be out and about a lot. But we are going to start with a lower enrollment number. It's our first year.
Yeah, Kelly's point about the things that you can find in a district.
Yeah.
She makes a good point about the business office. We also have health offices. We also have finance. We have human resources. We, there, there are things beyond just the classrooms that most people don't know about because they have them frankly, behind the scenes. We have facilities management. There are a lot of, of opportunities. But in addition to that, Easton, in my experience, is very unique in the amount of partnerships that we have with community organizations and businesses. And we are now on one campus, which makes the campus traveling easier. We are still near the police fire stations, which are, is not going to change in years. And even if you think about the area circumference around us, five to 10 miles even, we have partnerships with many of the YMCA, which also, again, think of your first thought of the YMCA, but then think of all the components that run the building. We have the Ames Library. We have, there are just so many opportunities that it is, if you stop and sort of think about it from that perspective, you would be surprised at how many opportunities that students will have in a very short distance.
I did want to name, too, that there are several teachers that really do value their community service students. For example, it is, is an essential part of the art program. So they will take an intern.
I see.
And same thing with the nursing. The nurses would take an intern because we have students who are very interested in nursing programs, and they did their community service with the nurses for that reason. So those, those essential community service students will go through the internship program instead.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I had a vision of kids racing all over town.
Yeah.
And the mom in me was like, oh, how are we doing this exactly?
Right, yeah.
So that we don't have, you know, racing in our park.
We have the same mom impulses.
Yes, right. As much as I'm like, this is amazing, but how do we do it safely? So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from committee members?
Yeah. On that required graduation update.
Yeah.
So that number is for all students, even though, okay. I'm just a little bit confused on it.
So all students will need to get a total, take a total of 24 courses or 120 credits to graduate.
Okay.
The majority of our students take the full 140.
Okay.
They, they are fully loaded every single year.
So this is basically, everybody's basically going to stay the same, but you've got that small percentage.
Exactly.
That needs to have a better shot at it.
Exactly, because they're still required to take, we can waive the 35 credits in a year, but to waive the overall graduation requirements is a much bigger, a much bigger deal.
Thank you.
It's the case-by-case, year-by-year basis.
Okay.
Adjustments are more, what's the word I'm looking for? Just part of, part of general practices of high schools, yeah.
It allows the flexibility so that they can address the individual needs of learners.
Okay.
Whereas in the past, not just in Easton, but everywhere, policies were very blanket policies. And we're seeing that in the age of making sure we have full inclusivity, we're meeting the needs of every individual with equity, we need a little bit more of a flexible approach.
And then I, I just had one more question on the senior privileges.
Yeah.
So you, so if they don't take a class, if you have a rotating schedule, are they, do they miss like first period every day, or do they?
Yeah, we have a rotating schedule, so it would be, so for example, think of our, our schedule as A through G, but every block meets at a different time.
Right.
So if their senior privilege is A block, when A block is first, they can come in late, and when A block is last, they can leave early. But that's it, only A block, because that's their senior privilege block.
I get it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I know. No, well, you, we live it every day, and it's.
No, no, I understand the schedule, but I was just, and I think Kelly kind of alluded to it also with, if you're going for the internship.
Yeah.
It's, it'll be two blocks together.
Right.
So on the days that they don't have the two blocks together.
Yeah.
It's not happening.
They'll have class.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep, they'll be in class.
A question on the credits piece.
Yeah.
Just because I feel like I have to ask it. So this is zero implication from our standpoint in terms of college applications, because we're remaining in a place where we're equitable with others. So I'm sort of assuming that based on what you said, but I just feel like I should just confirm that. We don't feel that there's any concern there.
No, no.
Can you go back to the list? Sorry, go right ahead, Dan.
It looks like it would put us in the middle, so I just.
Yeah, but like Ms. Kavanaugh mentioned.
I think the list of schools.
The adjustment to credits.
Those list of schools for credits.
The credit total is really, ultimately only, only going to impact a very, a very small percentage of our students, because the vast majority currently and will still graduate exceeding the minimum credit total needed.
Yep.
Like Ms. Kavanaugh said, they're all, everyone's going to take 35 credits each year unless there are extravagant circumstances, why that wouldn't make sense, so that still they're earning 140 credits if they haven't earned any additional credits kind of before high school started or over the course of summer through dual enrollment opportunities. So I, I would not envision any change to how a college would view the rigor of our schedule, rigor of our transfer.
I just want to make sure any kids who already were struggling didn't then feel the weight of then trying to apply, although it looked from the data that that wasn't an issue.
And just to, to, again, add to that great answer, giving you the perspective outside of Easton, senior privileges have been in iteration since I was in high school, a little while ago, and.
Same a little while ago?
We don't need to be specific.
Same thing.
But if you look at the lists, sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean senior privilege. Yes, that's true about senior privilege, but also about the number of credits, which was what I meant to talk about, sorry. But if you look even at the bottom of the list, Sharon, Wellesley, Westwood, those schools are not going to offer opportunities for students that are going to impact their ability to get into college.
The other part of that is if we're going to be implementing senior privilege and allowing students, seniors, to only earn 30 credits, it probably makes a lot of sense to reduce the total credit number as well.
That makes sense. Thank you.
May I comment?
Of course, yeah.
So I just want to actually name what many of you are probably seeing in this presentation. First of all, it takes an awful lot of work to put together. This is not just a list, right? Every one, every new course presented comes with a lot of research, comes with exploration of what other districts are offering, same, same exact questions that you're asking, but also comes with curriculum, comes with a completely different pedagogy, perhaps, approach to teaching, staff who are flexible and innovative and looking to do something different with their students. So it's a, it's a Herculean effort that can easily be overlooked, because people are generally pleased with our program of studies, but that's not the approach that's taken. And Mrs. Kavanaugh can't do it alone, as she acknowledged. But I also want to acknowledge that that also requires organization and leadership. And Mrs. Kavanaugh has provided that. A lot of the reasons that the selection committee chose her and I ultimately decided to hire her was the focus on student voice and choice, which I think you noticed quite a bit, respecting the capacity of the students, as you heard this evening, who are absolutely capable of expressing their opinion and desire and doing so with articulation and seriousness of purpose. But also the laser focus on equity and inclusion. And if people still have concerns or questions about what does that exactly mean? These are examples. Making sure that we don't have separate courses that are relegated for students who have cognitive or developmental difficulties, that our students are educated together, that we provide opportunities for enrichment, as I noted earlier, that we are getting rid of antiquated language such as take this course if you don't want to go to college or aspire to educate yourself after high school. And so I, I want to acknowledge that. I want to thank Mrs. Kavanaugh and the entire team. But I want to make sure I'm consciously naming it for people that think that maybe this happens everywhere automatically because it does not necessarily happen that way.
Can I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, 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 you go.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So in that lens of, of equity, I noticed that dual enrollment courses are, are personal finance of the, of the families. So is there any opportunity if someone is not able to pay, be able to pay that tuition? That there, there is a substitute because I feel like that's not really affordable.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. So one of the things, we've been actually very fortunate recently because of the grant money this, the past few years that we've been able to pay for the college credits for students. Now that grant funding is going away, but me and Mrs. Pruitt and Dr. Cabral are all working together to find other ways within the budget to pay for students who can't afford the college. Luckily, the programs that we're looking at, it's not very expensive per credit. So it's very affordable, but we still obviously want equitable access. So any student who, and their school counselors are a huge voice in this, can reach out to us and let us know if there's any students who, who need financial support and we'll find it.
And just, again, to add to it, sorry to be a broken record or whatever it is now.
I didn't really think about that.
Did it again. Shucks. Okay, so that's also why we have a strong emphasis on concurrent enrollment, which is when our educators are applying to colleges and universities to be adjunct professors and teach courses during the day that count for high school credit and concurrently college credit. The reason being, we're not paying the college who's paying an instructor. We, the students are paying for the credits of the course, which in itself makes it much lower in cost. And we have been subsidizing all or portions of the cost for students as long as we've had it in place so far.
And what I'll do is when I present the handbook changes to you, I will also plan to present to you in the program of studies which courses are going to be up. By then I'll know which courses will be college credit so that you can, you can add, we can add that to the program of studies as well.
Any other questions?
Can I all say something?
I just wanted to say, like, you know, just to second what Dr. Cabral was saying about student voice and emphasizing Mrs. Kavanaugh's consistent efforts. As you saw, I think we can speak on both Braylon and Franklin in saying that we are very thankful for the opportunity to speak, but we also find it really, really not cool. It is cool, but we all, we like, we may find it really amazing in the sense that like we would get to, you know, speak and present to you such, you know, higher people in the education system and our voices are heard and all the other students' voices are heard through, at the school system.
I commend you all for speaking up.
Absolutely, yeah.
I agree.
Appreciate all that you bring and having that, that direct student perspective brought to us is worth its weight in gold. So we really appreciate your willingness to, you know, go above and beyond. Just you, all that you need to do as students to participate in efforts like this, to be on the student advisory committee and then for Marvel, for you to be here with us every, every couple of weeks meeting. This, this connectivity is hugely helpful. So I have a couple of comments, no questions. I just want to say, one, your presentation answered all of my questions. Senior privilege was something that I was not familiar with. It wasn't something that I had in my high school. But I did, I did do some, some kind of independent research earlier this week. You could see that it was very common and, you know, something that has been in place at many, with many of our peers for many, many years. So I appreciate that you keep on top of peer research and, and, you know, you're able to bring to us what's, what are some common best practices among our peer schools. I, I love the goal of continuous improvement, right? That we're not, we're not, we're never settling for this is what we've always done and that's fine. You know, education is changing, the world is changing, our students' needs are changing. And I really appreciate all the work that you and your staff and the students put towards meeting those changing needs and trying to, to stay ahead. And then what I really love is how much this, this program of studies really has a whole student field to it that comes through in just all of the coursework and everything else that you shared. And I just, I just had to call out the, the new addition to social studies curriculum. I would love to have taken.
I would, me too.
Facing history.
Facing history in ourselves.
Yep.
I did too. I loved it.
Yeah, I, I wish that had been an option when I was in school. It's, it's very heavy, but I, I think the students who are able to take it will get so much out of it.
Yeah.
That's one of those things that will change. So great, great, great addition. I think that's, that's all I have. So again, thank you for all of this. And as a parent of a senior, I would have to go, yeah, people would have liked that.
Yeah.
Not that the options today are, there's nothing wrong with them. These, these would have been a nice investment, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask one last question? I, the facing history course, I think it noted that it was honors only. Is that, is there an opportunity to offer something similar for all? Because I think there's a.
The way you just described it so well, I do think in the current times, it's actually one of those things that would be wonderful for all.
Yeah, for all students, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I, all of your commentary on equity and striking that language, thank you. Our words matter when people read it on paper. It tells them something about themselves. So I think that's important. But then I thought about that same lens for that class as well and wondered if there would be an opportunity.
Yes, I would love to talk to Mr. Auger about that. What I'd love to say is that, I'm just going to name that we, we're in a school where there are students who won't take courses if they're not offered as honors. And we want this course to be offered, we want students to be encouraged to take it. That being said, there might be an opportunity to keep it as a hybrid course and have it be both college prep and honors. So I'll talk to the department head about that because that's a good point. I appreciate that very much.
It's so relevant.
I know, you need to vote on the program of studies, but I'm not done presenting to you. So I don't know what you want to do, me to keep going.
Continue your presentation and when we reconvene at the front of the room, we can vote from there. Thank you.
Dr. Cabral, do you want to start?
Sure. So there's been a lot of conversation about the schedule, mostly because this has not been done in silence. It's been very transparent. And again, I would like to commend the team and Mrs. Kavanaugh and her leadership on working on the schedule. Once more, something that doesn't necessarily have to be looked at, but is. We had a schedule audit done and we've reviewed those results already. But then just getting those results and not acting on them really would be a waste of effort, money and time for everyone. One of the things that we were not necessarily shocked to realize as a result was that we, we had some gaps in equity in our offerings and how we were able to offer things during the day, what people had access to. And so this is again, an effort to make sure that that is addressed. We don't want to just have words out there. We want to make sure that our actions, no matter how difficult, challenging or time-consuming they are, represent what our core beliefs really are. And so this is an effort for that. Mrs. Kavanaugh is going to go over the process and timeline. And I just want to make sure that those words were intentional, process and timeline. This is not going to be a presentation of a schedule. We're not, or I should say, Mrs. Kavanaugh, I have nothing to do with the process yet and I can't take any credit. But Mrs. Kavanaugh and the team are in the process of a thorough evaluation, which includes voice and choice, certainly from students, but also other stakeholder groups, staff members, educators, parents and so on. So this is just to give you an update of the process and the timeline. And actual feedback, I think you only have one group left for, for feedback. Is that the, the parent group, I think? Okay. So again, just looking at the process that was chosen, having the parent group be the last group, I think is not only purposeful, but it's very meaningful. I'm putting myself in a parent shoe, for example. If I were going to be asked for feedback on, on a schedule, I'd like to know what the teachers and students think when I'm thinking about what I think as a parent. Certainly, parents have extremely valuable input. But if I were not an educator, I might want to know what are some of the things that the students asked for? What are some of the things that the staff advocated for? And whether or not I weigh that into my feedback is certainly my choice. But in the interest of providing full information to people so that they can give educated and knowledgeable feedback, they are going to be asked to do that, I think, very shortly. But I'm sure that's part of the presentation, so I won't, I won't inject myself in that. There were, I received a couple of questions about schedules, quote unquote, schedules that were presented when the students were asked for their feedback. Those were not OA schedules. In fact, you may not even see those ever again. In, in asking students for feedback, it is very helpful for them to have visuals to understand the kinds of things that people are talking about. And so, so that was provided. It's my understanding, certainly Mrs. Kavanaugh can talk about it further if she'd like, but the ones that were sort of given as examples are not even going to be proposed for consideration. They were just to give an illustration of different elements. Like what is a late start? What might that look like? What is a senior priv or rotating or dropping two periods instead of one, for example? So there are no existing drafts. I personally do not have a draft of any, of, at all, of what might be coming because I am respecting the process. I know it's thorough and I know it's being carefully considered. And I'm very anxious and excited to see the results of those efforts. So that should be coming and this presentation should show you when that timing is going to be.
Thank you very much. Okay. So this first slide is an, an overview of the timeline. I just want you to see it in complete order. So we received the schedule audit from, the schedule audit was done in the fall of 2022. And then the school improvement plan, which was based off the data. The data was reviewed with the school committee and then the school improvement plan was, was submitted to you in May 2023 with the initial goal of reviewing our schedule. Then we created the staff schedule committee. Two of them are here today, Mrs. Neely and Mr. Fitzgerald, and they'd be happy to answer any questions for you about their experience on the committee. We did initial surveys before we started looking at the entire process of what, of what people's experiences have been in our current schedule and what their hopes are for the future. Then we did a review of probably over 40 high school schedules and chose schools to visit, for onsite visits. And we act, some teachers and committee members spent anywhere from a half a day to a full day at these schools, interviewing people. If I could just take a moment while I'm here to say a huge thank you to the principals who accommodated our staff going out there for an entire day. I was so thankful and impressed with the thoroughness of those site visits. We created sample schedules to share, again, for visuals. It's really hard to say a rotating flex block and not actually see what that looks like. We shared those with students and staff. And then we sent another feedback survey off, survey, which I'll share those, all these results with you, that really focused on just those key components of the different schedules. So now the next, so I'm still in that, that, that level eight, that point eight. I'm at the point where, where the committee has reviewed all of the feedback, is looking at what potential schedules would meet the needs and the desires of our staff and students so that I can present that, those findings to the families. And so next, my last slide has the date. Next Wednesday, I'll be doing a virtual meeting because I want to make it as accessible to as many people as possible to go over all of those points that we're looking at and get family feedback. Because that's an incredibly important part of this process, especially if it impacts the starter and time of school. So the goals and objectives based on the audit, we talked about this in the past, but is to implement dedicated time for academic intervention, again, along with our equity work that we're trying to continue to increase and improve our achievement gap, create opportunities for off-campus learning, internship, to review available opportunities to address those disproportionality I was just speaking to through intervention, and then to create additional common planning time for teachers and for educators within the schedule. So those were our goals and objectives. If you look, I think the next slide might have the school improvement plan. If you look at this though, the, out of all those goals and objectives that came from the audit, the one that we focused on, our top priority, is increasing the number of students that can receive academic support and enrichment within our school day. So that's the, that's the most important part. There was no specific method to how we were going to provide that. The schedule committee was tasked with finding ways that we can do that and designing a schedule that meets those, that those criteria. So these are the members of the scheduling committee. I, me to extend my honest and sincerest gratitude to the co-chairs. Mrs. Campbell, an English teacher, and Mrs. Sweeney, who's the director. The department head for our business and applied arts has put countless hours into this process. They are truly gems. This would not have gone as well as it did if it was not for the unwavering effort they had and the consistent communication that they had with the scheduling committee and me as they went through this process. And then the rest of the staff members, as you'll see who, here, who were on that committee, who represent a variety of different roles and responsibilities in our building. So the initial survey focused on the, the core components of a schedule. The class length time, how many classes drop, the static blocks versus rotating blocks, transition time, lunchtime advisory, which we now have for 12 minutes every day. And then some general broad questions like what do you like about our current schedule? What would you change? That we then grouped and coded to help us to prioritize the wants and needs of our staff and students. The site visits, so these are the, the eight schools that the committee decided to visit based on their schedules and to learn more about the experience. So they met with students, staff, administrators and reviewed the schedule and got to witness how their schedules worked within the confines of their school. And both, you guys went, both went on two, right? Or, yeah, they both went on, Mrs. Neely and Mr. Fitzgerald both went on two school visits. So these are the visit takeaways. The use of a flexible learning block, which I'm going to explain to you in my next slide, was reviewed positively and consistently across all of the schools that they visited by both students and teachers. Increasing the time for intervention and enrichment during the school day made a major impact on student achievement, mental health, as well as their ability to continue to do their outside activities and manage their schoolwork effectively. It also supports conversations with families as students are struggling. You can work with parents to pick times, those flex times during the day and sit there and schedule, okay, your, your meeting with you, your child scheduling, look, we're going to schedule out these next few flex blocks and I will update you as a parent on how they do in each of these flex blocks as I continue to provide them support. Or on the flip side, continue to provide them enrichment for students who are looking for, for more rigorous or more experiential learning opportunities within our school day. Another thing that they found is that districts that had common planning time had more aligned curriculum within their district. They typically built it in during the flexible learning block or in a late start or an early release. They talked about the importance of the smooth rollout of flex block, having clear sets and rules and norms and the specific instructions and the purpose of it. Being clear is essential to rolling out a flex block. And then finally, all of the districts they visited and looked into, as we've talked about a lot with the program of studies, college and career opportunities are one of their school's goals for the year. And so we're in line with other districts in working towards creating schedules that allow for that. It was, and some of the districts they visited actually is the top, is the top focus because they've had flexible learning time for a long time. They're making that shift to providing more opportunities for a higher percentage of students to earn career, college credit or to do career exploration and internships during the day. So what is a flex block? A flex block, so flex blocks have been around in Massachusetts probably since about 2015, 2016. And it's a dedicated time during the day where students can either be specifically asked by a teacher to come see them to either make up work, enrichment activities, intervention activities, or they can choose where they want to go to get support. So all of the faculty and staff in the building would be available during flex time for a student to go see them. That includes PE teachers running courses, it includes the art teachers. And the biggest benefit to this is that it helps with, with the equity issue around getting support during the school day for diverse learners. It's a opportunity for learning. And one of the things that we learned in our schedule audit. And one of the things that we learned in our schedule audit is when we look at equity of access and when we look at our disproportionality in our course leveling. It is, it's not people and it's not curriculum that increases student achievement, it's time in front of highly qualified instructors. And flex time gives us that opportunity to provide that extra time. They need more time in front of their content area teachers. And it, I mean, as I say that out loud, I'm thinking it, it could potentially reduce the need for tutoring outside of school because here's a highly qualified teacher who's available during the day at the same time as your child to get extra help. And research also shows that students who are struggling just need more core instruction, not more remediation or more tutoring. This would provide that for them. The other thing which we will have to, we will, as if, if, if a flex block is adopted, the other piece that's helpful is that for students who have to take care of loved ones after school or younger siblings or who have to work, we could also provide opportunities to get involved in student club and activities during the school day. So we could host a GSA meeting, we could host a multicultural club meeting during, once a month, and students who are unable to access that after school could attend those as well. And that's, that's just another opportunity that flex block might provide. So, okay, so the committee shared sample schedules with the staff and students so far, and these were the, the highlighted features that I'm going to be asking for parent feedback as well. One is the flex block or what we called academic learning block in those schedules that we sent out. Common planning time for teachers either built into a late start in the morning or during that flex block. Accommodations for the internship course, one of which was having it be back-to-back in, in the semester format so that students can do building or off-site internships. And we shared different types of schedules. Rotating schedules, which tends to be the preferred, I'll show you. And then Monday through Friday schedules where every Monday's the same, every Tuesday's the same, every Wednesday. And those Monday through Friday schedules, although the blocks still rotate, the day is consistent. And so for, for schools that have a high percentage of students leaving the building for college and career or for, what's the word I'm looking for? Internships, thank you. Those schedules often work best because we, schools are the only ones that work on a rotating schedule. I don't even work, as a principal, I don't work on a rotating schedule, I work on Monday through Friday, right? So it just provides that consistent scheduling opportunity, which is why that was presented as one of the options. And then finally, we looked at schedules that had either one or two classes dropping out of the cycle every day. So here's the feedback we got after we shared those. Eighty percent of, approximately eighty percent of staff and student would like to add a flex block to their schedule. Fifty-five percent of staff and students preferred a rotating schedule to a Monday through Friday schedule. Fifty-six percent of students like having advisory every day. The major feedback we heard on that was they liked the break in the morning and the time to just breathe and connect with each other. Staff were divided on the number of advisory periods. The, the question was phrased, how many advisory periods do you feel you need within a week in order to feel connected and that you've built relationships with your advisory? And the faculty were really varied, anywhere from five to one. And then finally, we looked at different lunch start times in the different schedules and I can tell you that for, for this perspective, that we will be doing a lunchtime between 11 and 11:30. That was the majority of what people like and what the staffing of the cafeteria prefer to. So that was one of the things that we threw out there for the, for the community. All right, so next steps. So next is to provide feedback, parent guardian feedback. So an email will go out to parents by the end of the week with an invitation and a Google Meet to come online, for me to go over some of this PowerPoint, as well as the key points that I would like feedback from parents on and the impact that that schedule change could potentially have on them, as well as their, obviously, their children. And I encourage parents who are watching to talk to your kids and bring that information to this session because not every student provided feedback. It's the, and it might be your students' feedback that I haven't heard yet, that you, that you share with me on this, on this evening. So I'd really appreciate that. And then the, once all that final feedback is collected, we'll prevent, present that to the faculty and propose a new schedule for next year. My goal is for that to be done by the end of March. So the, right now, we're doing course selection, so I would love for the new schedule to be done so we can build our student information service, our scheduling with the new schedule when they start to create the course, the coursework, yeah.
Will any of these proposed schedules negatively impact the plan for senior privileges?
It wouldn't negatively impact it. The only thing I would say is that if we went with a schedule where not every block meets first block, it depends on what block is your senior privilege, whether or not you'd be able to come in early or leave late, that piece of it. Does that make sense?
So there are many schools across the Commonwealth that have senior privileges and they all have different schedules.
Yeah.
So it doesn't impact where you have it, whether you have it first period, last period, middle of the day. The only thing it impacts, as Mrs. Kavanaugh said, was that since we have a rotating one as opposed to a fixed one, I don't know what we'll have next year. The only difference would be if it's first period and it rotates to then the second period, which is during the day, third, fourth, fifth during the day, sixth at the end of the day they can leave. It limits the number of times that they can actually leave the building, which may be preferable or not. That's what we're looking for feedback on. So it doesn't have any impact on the actual schedule itself. It's more of a opportunity for students, just like a particular course that was put in, that course is going to be offered regardless of what schedule is chosen. This is the same thing. Senior priv is like a course regardless of the schedule. The only difference is that one component of senior privilege allows you to leave the building. That's the only difference. Not sure.
It doesn't look like it does.
It's all right. It's fine.
You sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah. For the students, is the way we select our courses on Aspen going to change based on how it's like either like set or previewed because of the change in?
No.
The schedule?
No, so where, unless something were to change, everything the scheduling committee looked at was under the assumption students would still take seven courses and faculty would still teach five classes. So as students are being asked to pick courses for next year, that process will change.
Thank you.
I have a couple of them. But I feel like I lose the question ask, you're doing what else?
I'm struggling a little mentally to understand the mechanics of flex block. So everyone would have flex block at the same time or it would rotate throughout your day?
So flex block is built into the schedule like any other course period. So let's say day two, second block is flex block, day two, second block is always flex block.
I see. So it's baked in almost like advisory or?
Yep.
It doesn't rotate?
Like focus block at the middle school.
Yeah. It could rotate, it could meet at different times, but just like our schedule rotates different blocks where every block meets at every space in the schedule, flex time could be replaced in any of those spaces.
So it would sit in like a course, so not every kid in the building is on flex block at the same time?
They are. It is, like advisory, they are all flex block at the same time.
And where do they all go? Is it like focus in middle school where you're assigned a base?
Yeah.
Or is it something different?
The focus of flex block is truly to get kids what they need. So the hope is that students work with their teachers and with their advisory teacher because they would schedule flex block with their advisory to look at their grades, look at their assignments, make choices on, like that's part of the process is teaching students how to choose where to go during flex block with their advisory teacher. However, if a student doesn't choose a place to go or, or just doesn't really feel like they need to get out, they will have a designated room, which is their advisory that they'll default to.
Got it. And the impact of it, so making space for a flex block?
Yep.
When we just talked about credits, so we know it's not there. Is it, are you looking at options of shortening the number, the amount of time spent in each class, dropping, I think you implied sort of potentially dropping two classes a day? What are some of the mechanics of how we would make this?
Great question. So there's different options. One is dropping two classes a day, but increasing the amount of time that they're in class. So 60-minute classes, but two classes drop. There are some iterations with, we, we prefer a class time that's closer to around an hour to accommodate all the different types of courses that we offer, math, cooking, science, labs, right? The other, the other option is to still continue to maybe have, I mean, there's just many options, some long blocks and some shorter blocks built into the schedule. There's a question you asked. Can you repeat, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I was just trying to understand, like, are we looking at shortening classes or dropping two sometimes or how that would kind of come together?
Yeah. Oh, I know what I was going to say. The other thing is in every single one of the schedule iterations we're playing with, we're looking at the number of minutes a class meets every week to make sure that we're not losing a lot of time on learning in each subject area, in each course. Does that make sense? So we have calculations of the number of minutes for every single schedule that the students will be in class in a week.
So flex block might not be every day.
Correct.
It might be a certain number of times per week, anywhere from?
As a matter of fact, the feedback from staff and students was overwhelmingly two to three times a week is what they see, not every day.
Got it. And then my last question is, I believe at one point you had said that a way potentially, I might be misunderstanding this, but a way to potentially manage some of these different schedule options might be having students able to come in later or leave earlier as a way to accommodate flex block, not just senior privilege. If that's an option, how does that work from a busing standpoint and the shared buses?
So a lot of the schools that we visited have, throughout their schedule, a, a day, a day, whether it's consistent or a few times a month, where students come to school late. So basically, first block is common planning time for teachers so that they can collaborate across different disciplines to do interdisciplinary projects, which we try to do right now, but it is really challenging given our schedule. So buses run at the same time. We have the library and the cafeteria supervised and staff for students who take buses and they get time to complete homework, you know, read, relax. Other students would be able to, who can either get dropped off at school or drive, would be able to come in later and the school day would start, I mean, it depends on the schedule and, and where you look. It could be anywhere from 30 minutes later than normal to 45 minutes later than normal. Does that answer your question?
And while I find the team and Mrs. Kavanaugh to be very innovative, I do have to say that this is again, a very common model across the Commonwealth. In fact, the last district I was in, we brought this in, that was, we're going on almost 14 years ago now. And it was very, it was looked at with suspicion at first, but it was very well received and has been really great ever since.
It's not lost on me that it goes back into that whole, like, helping students figure out how to manage their own time, right? And giving them that piece. So I think the concept is amazing. It just, it's always an adjustment, as you said.
Well, it doesn't have to be an adjustment. Parents can decide if they want their student to still come in on the bus or drive them in regular, on the, the regular day, they still can and maintain the, absolutely maintain the same schedule.
That was my, just my last sort of comment question. Are there any concerns, and I, I think this almost spans a little bit to senior privileges I think about it too, are there any concerns around equity for that? So those who can afford to have a car, whose parents have the flexibility to drive them, get the extra sleep, which is very important. But at the same time, those who maybe don't have that same capability, they don't have that opportunity to leave early as a senior or, you know, the family couldn't necessarily afford the extra car, like that may, is there any concerns around equity for that or have you found with other districts that's not a concern?
Yeah, I mean, I, you've lived it. I don't know if you want to answer and then I can chime in, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's an area of focus, to be sure, as well as other things. So it's something that the, the high school would definitely focus on if that were to come to fruition. Nothing's been decided yet. But these are valid questions because in order for parents to make educated decisions about what they want to give as feedback, it's important to know what the options are. It is, it would be an area of focus and just like anything else, when you start something new, we make tweaks to it, as you can see, we're doing on a regular basis. There may be unexpected byproducts as well that we will also make sure that we review. In, in my experience, I didn't see it to be that sort of problem. In fact, it was a little bit surprising at first how many students still came to school by choice because they did exercise that ability to use that time to, you know, study halls are gone, we need directed focus and study in time on learning, but that was an opportunity to use it like a study hall and to get that structured time that they needed. And so people, a lot of students used it in that way purposefully. And they do, just like they do for sports and clubs and other activities, they will ride share with other parents or they, there are a lot of creative ways that people come up with to, to advocate for themselves and look for ways to do that, but absolutely it is something that we would focus on.
That is also going to include that I am a parent of a high school student who has this in their district and he doesn't have a parent at home, because I'm here, to, to go get him. They started off with an early, early, late start and now they're an early release instead. And they're very creative on how, on ways to get home. And he's also not, he doesn't have a license. So whether we had a car or not, it's not something that would be an option for him. So it is, they are very creative.
Yeah. I'd like to add what Dr. Cabral just said too, that I realize that OA has had the same schedule for an extremely long time. As a matter of fact, Megan Campbell shared with me that we've actually only had really two schedules in the history of the school. So we're moving forward with an ongoing review of our schedule on a regular basis. This is not a schedule that I'm going to put in place for another consistent 14 years. Like, we have to be reflective and review and make adjustments. And that is really common in high schools in the Commonwealth. And it's going to be an adjustment for all of us, but it's an important one because our kids are changing every year and our needs are changing every year and we're going to change, we got to change with them, so.
I have a question. Would the, for students who currently maybe due to an IEP, taking academic support?
Yep.
Class?
Yep.
That, that prevents them from being, having that space in their schedule to take an elective that might be helpful and valuable to them? Do we envision that for some of those students, the flex block might open up the ability to fit another elective into their schedule and to get those types of supports that they would have gotten in the daily class, those needs met through flex block?
Well, for kids on IEPs, it's a team decision, right? And they have goals and accommodations and a service delivery to meet the needs that their disability requires them to have. The flex block is not designed to, to be put into the service delivery grid of a student. However, my hope is that we will have students who are in academic support and, you know, our goal for all of our kids, it, it's throughout the district, we want least restrictive environment always. At the high school level, they can't take their IEP with them. So the more independent we get them throughout their years, and if we can get them off an IEP by their senior year, the better they're going to be because they're going to have had that experience, right? My hope is that the flex block will help those students build those skills, those self-advocacy and the ability to reach out and get the support that they need to find success and meet their goals so that they no longer need those services. But they are due definitely to very separate things.
You have an audience member that has a question?
Public speech?
Public comment? Yeah, I guess, so I'll ask the committee. So we have public comments scheduled and that's normally where we would take feedback and questions from the, from members of the public, but where it's only one member here.
Are you staying, Mrs. Dean? Through the meeting? So she will be here during public comment?
If you, if you don't mind, we can, we have public comments scheduled, so we'll, we'll have opportunity for you to ask a question or make a comment at that time. Okay, all right, thank you.
But do you want to ask while Kelly's still here?
Well, can you, are you able to stay for the remainder of the meeting? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, any, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Go ahead and?
For joining us, you proceed with voting. Thank you. Braylon?
Thanks, Braylon. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. So actually, looking at the, looking at the remainder of the agenda, oh, actually, let's, let's vote on the program of studies first and then I might, I might-
let's, let's vote on the program of studies first, and then I might, I might make a motion to move something around. Okay, so, does anybody, any committee members have any further questions or comments on the program of studies? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the OA program of studies as presented tonight?
So, move DeLuca.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, so, so, looking at the agenda, we have a couple of items later in the agenda that may take a little bit of time. The next few items are, will be fairly quick. So, committee members, wondering what you would think about moving items nine and 10, the calendar reading and the MASC resolutions, to after public comment, and that way, Mrs. Kavanaugh does not have to sit here, and, and our member of the public through a couple of items that could take a little bit of time to get through?
Sure.
Unless you think the calendar...
I would think that we may have the calendar comments.
Okay, all right, so at least, let's move the resolutions down.
You mean for Mrs. Kavanaugh?
Or, or from the public, on the calendar, it's the school calendar itself.
I see.
Yeah, that could be, thank you, that's a good point. Okay, so, let's at least, all right, so I, I'm gonna make a motion then to move public comment up before what is currently item 10, which is the MASC resolutions, which is something that could be, take some time to go through and probably won't generate public comment or questions. Okay, so, can I get a second?
Or at least not for Mrs. Kavanaugh to have to address.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all righty, so we have a few more items to get through that should not take up too much time before we get to public comment. Okay, all righty, so, next up is a vote to appoint a member of the school committee to sign invoices for the security project. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have the ongoing security project. Gale Associates is the design firm, and we are asking that we, the school committee, designate a member of the school committee to have the authorization to sign invoices for the security project. This is something that is common. We have done it throughout the building project of Blanche Ames Elementary School. We, as, by way of suggestion, certainly it could be any member of the school committee, but by way of suggestion, Mrs. DeLuca is currently a member of the municipal building committee, and of course, Ms. Starr is the chair of the committee, so it is possible that either one of them could very easily take on that role, but certainly, any member of the school committee could do that if interested, and that were your vote.
I also want to add Lawrence on the municipal building committee, too.
Nancy's on the security.
Security committee.
Yes, sorry.
So, is that a...
Well, as municipal building.
Yes, Mrs. DeLuca and Mrs. Loomis are both on the municipal building committee. I did misspeak. I meant that Mrs. DeLuca is on the security building committee. Thank you for that clarification.
And are we looking for just one signer?
Yes.
Okay, all righty, Mrs. DeLuca?
Fabulous, yes. Sign away.
Okay, so, then I, I'll make a motion to appoint Nancy DeLuca to sign invoices for the security project on behalf of the school committee. Can I get a second?
A second, Loomis.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Great. Next up, we have schedule of payments. So, since the committee last met, warrants 057S and 059S have been reviewed and approved by the committee. Okay, let's see, so we've got our student representative to the school committee update.
Yes, this is a little bit of a short one. Overall, again, throughout all of EPS, as February has ended, which is Black History Month, a lot of schools, we've honed in on certain people and, you know, monumental efforts that are made by black women and women throughout United States history, modern times, and, you know, just, again, again, throughout the globe, and we are hoping to continue that, even if it is not Black History Month, throughout the curriculum, even through younger students and up. And then, specifically for Blanche Ames, there is a partnering with Bridge State College, as the college students are directly working with students for seven weeks, teaching reading lessons. These students are seniors, and they're working towards being a teacher, as this is their last step in graduating. They also have or have had swim lessons. They ended, and they were a 25th session that was done for the second graders, which is an awesome opportunity for the elementary students. The middle school has had, having better adjustment in behavior. They've had assemblies, they've had conversations with their teachers, guidance counselors, and principals, and, you know, things are starting to look up on that end. And then, high school, course recommendations are being put, are being, are started, starting, started?
Next week, darling, we got spring of studies next week.
And then, as spring sports are starting, winter sports are ending, we were talking about girls' basketball this weekend, and, yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, tomorrow, you're very, I'm, sorry.
It's a weekend.
Yeah, it's a weekend. You were right. But, yeah, that was all.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments for Marvel? Thank you as always.
Good job, Marvel.
Great report. Okay, and then, next up, we've got the discussion of the district calendar for 2024, 2025, and this is our first of at least two readings before we vote.
Correct.
Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. The calendar traditionally has a minimum of two readings. It could go longer if you're looking for more information or research on our part. Mrs. Pruitt, Mrs. Souza, and Mrs. Schein have been working very hard on this calendar. They have the three, we usually provide three drafts. We have the three drafts for you. I'll let Mrs. Pruitt review them with you. I will just give a little bit of background. It's not necessary, but historically, the school committee has used the first reading to eliminate at least one of the drafts for a more granular focus of the others for the second reading. But certainly, you don't have to even do that this evening. This is just the first reading, and a vote will not take place at least until a second. Mrs. Pruitt?
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. In creating these three drafts, there is a lot that we had to take into consideration. We looked at, we have a list of holidays that we take into consideration, although we don't have days off for particular holidays, we still take them into consideration regarding professional development days and half-days, so forth and so on. We also look at professional development days, what's coming up for our professional development in the coming year, and when the placement of those days might be best utilized. And also, we look at some of the requirements as far as days in the contracts for our teachers, as well as days required for our students, and many other, and the other iterations that we are, we are trying to accomplish, many other things that we're trying to accomplish within the calendar. So, you'll see the three drafts in front of you. We always present one draft that has a start date for students after Labor Day, so I wanted to point that out to you, that that is draft number three. This year, we are requesting that our professional development days fall early in the year, one in October and one in November. I'm sorry, I meant next year, next school year, one in October and one in November. Our focus is school safety this year. We, we are on a two-year cycle of a full presentation on school safety, a full district review of school safety, so we want to make sure that we are, this coming year is the year for that professional development. We want to make sure it's early in the year, so that is why we are requesting the October date. We do have a wonderful partnership with our first responders, so the Easton Police Department and the Easton Fire come and assist us with that training. We thought it would be way more appropriate to have that in October rather than on the election day. So, our second day, obviously, since it is a presidential election year, we are requesting that the professional development day happens on election day. The other change that you will notice is the placement of teacher conferences, parent teacher conferences, in grades K through eight, the first one in the fall. Traditionally, that has been done in December the past few years, and they, with feedback from principals as well as teachers, we are requesting that they be moved to November. It was initially installed at, at the December date, because that is when report cards come out. However, teachers would like to have the opportunity and administrators to have those conversations with families before they come out. They thought that December was a little too late to have those conferences. And I'm trying to think, I think that is all as far as the various changes that we're looking for. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You'll see on the side, many of the things that are we take into account as far as holidays. When this does get published, those do get eliminated from the actual calendar, but it's for, just so you know, when those, when those holidays fall and what we've taken into consideration. The, I'm sorry, the, one more, the October date. The reason why we're not having it the Friday before the long holiday is because of Rashish, sorry, Yom Kippur. That's why we pushed it to the Tuesday after the break.
I just wanted to ask, I mean, it's not, I'm just throwing this out there. To move the end of school two days later, to extend the December break until January 6th, was that ever thought about? So, it's two whole weeks, I know. But, I don't know, like, it's, you know, January, it's cold. I don't know how much you spend on electricity and fuel and whether it's worth it just to, or is it good to come back, do two days? I don't know. Girls?
Mrs. Kavanaugh's face, I know.
What do you think?
Well, we can find that out for you.
We can find out? I'm just asking. To me, that would be awesome, but people probably would rather get out, although there probably will be a snow day. Instead of getting out June 17th, it would be June 13th, so, on that first calendar, on the first one. The other, the, also, I just want to say, I do like the first one. I like when kindergarten stats, pre-k stats, the kids come in, they have two days, and then they get the long weekend. I like the, both of the professional development days, that the parent conferences got moved to November. I mean, I, I do like that one better than the other two, so. And I'm one that always wanted to start after Labor Day, but I think the minute we start after Labor Day, we're gonna get seven blizzards, so. That's why.
I did ask for feedback on that.
Okay.
So, that was taken into consideration.
Okay, great.
But I will, I'll just note a couple of things about the two-week vacation. As someone who doesn't get a vacation during that time, however, it's a different level of getting work done, so certainly, it would benefit me personally to have that. However, a couple of things. First of all, the more days that we have prior to MCAS is typically very beneficial. It isn't, we aren't a district that focuses on MCAS. It's just an ancillary consideration. The other thing is that the later we go in June, June 19th is a holiday, and so, if we do get close to June 19th, it's possible that that adds another day. So, you can see, for example, if it's, just looking at the first calendar, if it's scheduled to get, if we're scheduled to get out on the 13th, if we add the two days, that's the 17th. If we have even one snow day, we then go into the 20th, or even the next week.
One snow day would bring you to the 18th.
Right, but then...
Two, two snow days would bring you to the 20th.
Would be June 19th, right.
Would be the 20th, yeah. We've been there, that would have happened to us, wouldn't it?
Oh, we've had more than two days sometimes, yeah.
No, that the 19th, no, that the 19th brought us to the Tuesday after the Monday, okay.
Yep, yep, just a couple of first response considerations.
I also think that that's a benefit as the years go on. You know, you get to see when that longer break comes, and it's coming, but maybe just not next year.
No, I just, you know, I just don't know if it was sort of financial savings to, for the second and third, January 2nd, 3rd to be closed, that's all. I mean, I don't know how much...
Well, we still just, it depends on the weather. We're very fearful of frozen pipes and whatnot, so we do still heat the buildings and everything, yeah.
And there are people still working in the buildings as well.
Yeah, you're forgetting about some of us.
I don't forget about anybody.
And our sports teams are still in the buildings.
Yeah, I know. I'm just throwing it out there.
It's a great thing to, to bring up, and we appreciate it. That's what we're looking for, is different perspectives.
So, that's mine. And I assume that that May half-day, the 16th, the professional development day, that's like placement and all that stuff, right? That's when placement happens? Okay.
I'm kind of just asking, because she knows that I have them listed, every time. November, parent teacher conferences not being on the same days. So, the 9th through 12th is on a different date than the younger kids. Is there a reason that needs to be the case? Because some families have to take off to do them. They also have used older kids to babysit younger kids, whether it be siblings or neighborhood, so just wondering if there's a need for it to be separated.
There wasn't specifically a need in, in responding back, back and forth with the principals. Mrs. Kavanaugh's here, she can, she can also talk about this. This, this actually date does align more with their report cards. So, for, for the high school, it serves a better purpose, because it does provide more time for teachers to grade, but also that they have a more complete picture of conferences with, for their, for the children.
The high school still works on quarters, where other schools are on trimester, so they're off a little bit. The other thing is, one of the principals had a concern of all four schools being on the same day with parents who straddle schools and need to run back and forth between buildings, so we were actually struggling with even having three on the same day, to be honest with you, for that reason. But certainly, Mrs. Kavanaugh can, if she'd like, she certainly doesn't have to.
I guess I would just say that our high school students have seven teachers, and so parents are scheduling seven five-minute conferences, and then to get over to another building in between all of that can be really challenging with them.
Understood, but there are two days for the younger kids that you have to do that. So, I think as a working parent, taking off all of that time to try to accommodate and try to find childcare, when there are no older kids available to help with childcare, is more challenging.
I do want to remind you that we have virtual options for parents, too.
Yes.
They may prefer in person, but we do have virtual options, because we are very sensitive to that.
Yep.
And we, sorry?
An evening conference.
Yep, understood. It's just, if you ever tried to struggle, three kids, 10 teachers, and kids being home, and a full-time job, the jobs don't always look so timely as those things, nor is the, like, coverage of that. So, it is harder, I think, to not have the ability to access some of the older kids being home to help out with customers. So, that was definitely something that, because I know we do have all, we do have, well, I believe it's all four schools. Yep, off on March 20th, which is why I was asking. So, we have a different early release day where everything co-aligns?
Yes, but that's not parent teacher conferences for all schools.
Right, but they are all off, so then, it makes it easier.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Was there any consideration for teacher planning times of doing less substitutes, teachers finding substitutes, so maybe early release days, or?
We did talk about early release days. Time on learning is a concern right now. This year, the high school, for example, the, so time on, there are two regulations in Massachusetts for time on learning. It's 180 days and 900 hours at elementary and 990 hours at secondary. Obviously, we don't have a schedule for the high school yet. However, the elements are very similar to the elements this year, in terms of what is allowable and what isn't. Passing periods, lunch, for example, anything without structured curriculum or instruction does not count. Right now, the high school is at 990.1, so we are barely making time on learning right now. If we had even one half-day in the year, we would not be making time on learning. And all four schools need to meet time on, all four schools, we would need to have a day off or a half-day for all four schools, as opposed to one school. It's really problematic to do that, and we try to not do that as much as possible. We either do all schools or none of the schools, as much as we possibly can.
And so, historically, when my kids were smaller, there used to be very liberal use of half-days, and it was a nightmare, like, for working parents, because you were just like, it felt like at least once a month, there was... like, it felt like at least once a month, there was half-day, right? And you'd be like, oh, well, now I gotta schedule a school and all that, yeah.
I understand, and I respect that, but I think there are half-days.
So it was nice, it was nice to consolidate, it was nice to consolidate the professional development days into full days instead. They used to be broken up into half-days, maybe we're talking, you know, 15-plus years ago. And I think it was better, I think, right, it was, been better from a PD perspective to be able to schedule those full days, and you can bring in, you know, outside resources or have a security training or things like that.
For example, the security training that happens every other year has to happen in a full day.
Yeah.
It can't be a half-day because we don't have the, the first responder capacity to do the entire district at one time. So they have to do half the district in the morning, half the district in the afternoon. And as you can imagine, that is taking them away from their responsibilities in town, and it's a huge tax on them. So we appreciate them even having one day. Having them come back multiple days is extremely problematic. That's one example. The same is true if we hire consultants who come in, to hire them for a half-day and come back on another day, definitely doubles the cost.
I mean, my only comment is the, the moving the, the K to 8, or moving the elementary and middle school conferences back to November just brings me back to my struggles when I had lots of kids that age with the no-school November problem with work. And we've got an election day, a holiday now, conferences, plus, yeah, the early holidays.
It was cheese month, which is why we moved it, it was November, we moved it to December.
Yeah.
But we had a very strong push from staff this year to reconsider that. And so we did, and if that is problematic, they certainly will let us know, I'm sure.
I would strongly encourage us to look at moving that. So it's at least the same days, because if you have kids in all those schools, it's even worse. Just the fact that they're on two separate weeks, I mean, it's, to the point of coverage, it becomes very challenging for working families. Between the election day, the holiday, eighth grade and below, being home for two half-days a week later, your ninth grade, and I, like, it's just a lot.
Yeah, just to point out, too, that this year, they, they are, in the years that I've been here, they've always been on different days.
Yeah, they're just not on the same.
The high school's always been a different day than, than the elementary schools and the middle school.
Understood, they're just weeks apart.
They were weeks apart.
As a working parent, a lot.
Thanksgiving in the end, and it felt like that's 100 years, right?
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm just trying to bring in other, you know.
Totally get it. It's just, it is a working parent nightmare in the month of November.
I know, as a working mom, I totally get it.
And I think also, there is a sense of relief when they're all on the same half-day, and there's at least coverage and support. I would also say, my observation, wildly unpopular, I'm sure when I go home tonight, if we are struggling with time on learning, the December 20th date is so far removed from the holiday, I don't know that it technically needs to be a half-day.
It's contractual.
Oh, it is contractual, okay. Thank you. And then another question I had is, if we start the kids after Labor Day, is it an option to do the security day before Labor Day? Does that change whether we need the October 15th date?
That's also a contractual obligation.
Do you, two professional development days in the school year?
Understood, but I meant if the teachers, if the teachers started, I may not understand, this is like the new school committee member asking, right?
Yep, yep.
So getting up to speed as I go.
You always bring up great points, so don't.
So if the staff started on the 28th, but the students started, or the 29th, or whatever, and the students started on the 3rd.
Yep.
Could we move the 15th of October security day before the school, before the kids came in, just to have one last transition?
So the...
Or is the contractual language different that it has to tie?
The contractual language is, is different about when the first day, the first day for staff has a specific.
Specific requirements just for staff?
Yes.
But I would think.
Now, what, having it the next day?
That's my question.
That is something to look at.
I can't answer that off the top of my head, yeah.
I would think that time is like when teachers want to get their classrooms ready and start the new year, not be in meetings all day.
Entirely possible, I was just understanding the variations of calendar, like if they were to spend the day to get the, ready, and then have the security day. Then it's one last gap for kids, especially when you have no-school November coming up right after the October week.
Definitely something to consider and take a look at.
We will absolutely ask them. And just so you're aware, we do share all of these with the union as well, to make sure that we get their input, too. So we'll definitely do that again.
Any feedback from them that we should be aware of?
The conference dates first, and also starting before Labor Day. Those were the two things that were brought to my attention from leadership.
Do they advocate for starting before Labor Day or after?
Before Labor Day.
I, and I was told from the union that draft three from initial responses was not their draft of choice.
Hmm, it's mine.
It is yours or is not yours?
I would like to start after Labor Day, but if the teachers, if it's not favorable for the teachers, then I respect that and knowing to drop it.
I would, too. I feel like the beginning is incredibly hot and very challenging.
I feel like I've heard that a lot.
It's hotter at the end of June.
From families.
Nobody wants to learn past Memorial Day.
No one wants to learn past Memorial Day regardless, so we might as well keep going in June.
I can just tell you.
And you have fewer good learning days.
I can just tell you, there's always way more energy in September than there is in June.
Yes.
It doesn't matter what grade level it is.
What about August?
Yeah, well, we didn't talk about August.
There's good energy there.
Even the end of August, yes. It's good, we've got the shiny outfits, and people are excited, and there's a new beginning, and there's just a different air than there is in June. But certainly Marvel is a student, and she can speak up if she disagrees with me.
This August was terrible.
You like the, you like the pre-Labor Day? If you have to, or, or Labor, or post-Labor Day?
She's like, I want both.
An extended summer would be great, but then also the idea of, like, school ending late June is not something I don't think anyone would want. So I don't know, I feel like, I mean, if we started late and ended early, that would be, that'd be optimal.
I, I just don't love the idea, as a parent even, to like, start the school year, then have a long weekend, and then it's like a, a second first day again.
We do get mixed reviews on that from staff.
And I understand, kids are adaptable, I get it, but it just.
We do get mixed reviews. There are a lot of staff members who feel that that is very, depending on the age and grade level, that that is a very good segue for certain populations of students to not just start with a full week of school, for example, or even a four-day week.
I, I want to clarify, though, I just thought of this, the kindergarten team, a few teachers on the kindergarten team, they do prefer draft three.
I, yeah.
But, but the other feedback that I received from the union was that draft three was not the draft of choice.
Yeah, having been through, having been through both, and way back in my day, we ended school, and I live further south than this, like, June 23rd, because my best friend's birthday, and I always got excited when it was officially the last day of school and not the second-to-last day. So I, it has grained in my brain. So I, I am probably not as concerned about late June. But I do have concerns about draft two, and having the kindergarteners go in for one day. I know that was an experience last year, I've received some mixed feedback on that from families. I think for anxious kids, that may be tough, for excited kids, that may be tough, and for those who are in the middle, it might be okay. But it is, I think, a little bit of a tough schedule.
And I will, I will let you know that I did touch base with Mr. Sederbaum regarding both, and he sees the benefits of both. So he does not personally have a preference over draft one or two. He said that he can see both, because he did experience it one year with the, with the kindergarten starting before Labor Day, giving them that welcome to the school, then they go away for a few days and come back. But he also recognizes that it would be fine, the others, the other, you know, starting the same week as well. The, the following week, sorry. Start of the following week.
As, as in draft one, you're saying?
Yes, as in draft one, yeah, sorry.
So are we able to, like, take pieces and parts of draft one and draft two and draft three and?
We can suggest to Chrissy a couple of things that we want her to look at, and then to bring back next time. And if there is any of the calendars that we know, you know, that we, we definitely would not, you know, I think typically it's been the post-Labor Day start that we've eliminated in the past few years at this, at this meeting and focused on the pre-Labor Day starts, that's just historically what we've done the past few years. Doesn't mean that's what we have to do today, but just sharing some background. So I think I'm hearing that a takeaway would be to explore the question of whether or not that full-day security, professional development could happen right at the start of the year before students come back, so that was one question.
And just to, I'm sure it's obvious to you, but in addition to exploring the contract and staff input, we are very reliant on our first responders.
Schedule as well, of course.
Yes. This was vetted to them, that wasn't, so we will look into that also.
Yep, yep, so I think, yep.
And also with in mind that if that were to occur, the start, all the start dates and end dates would also be shifted.
Yep, understood. And it may not be a viable option, and that's fine, I was just more understanding.
Yep, yep. And then I think a second question that I, that I'm hearing would be, could we look at combining those November dates? Could the elementary be, and middle school be on, say, the 21st and 22nd, which would allow the high school time to keep its schedule, which is tied to the grading schedule?
Or the 21st moving to the 15th?
Yeah, maybe something like that, yep.
Either way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
May I ask a question before we make other suggestions? Why does the pre-K in kindergarten end so much earlier? I know.
Yeah, so we intentionally have three days in between those dates because we screen students for the following year. So the incoming kindergarteners, they, they use that, those days to screen the kids, and that helps with placement.
We need staff to do that.
Right.
Got it. It looks like it's four days, is that right?
It's, yes, you are correct. It's three and a half days, actually.
Oh, because of the half-days?
Yes.
Yep, so they have a full day that last day, they do not experience a half-day?
The student.
The kindergarteners, like, when, on their last day, their last day is a full day or a half?
No, their last day is a half-day.
Okay.
And then they have those three to test.
Okay, all right. Any other kind of alternatives or questions that we want Chrissy to explore?
This is less of a scheduling question, but is there, are there, like, has there been or is there opportunities for students to respond to these drafts?
Yes, now that, now that they are made public, if you'd like to bring them back and to the high schools and your group to share amongst, maybe even middle school, too, and, absolutely.
Okay.
That'd be great, maybe. You can email me with any suggestions, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. One more question to throw more into the mix. I just noticed your notes on the side were very helpful. September 3rd, primary elections, do we have any concerns about that being the first day for kindergartners since we're all on the same campus?
Thank you for bringing that up. Actually, I did receive, Dr. Caroll and I did receive an email from, from Danielle Sicard.
Sicard.
Sicard, thank you. Regarding, just to keep that in mind, we have had school during the primary elections before, so that shouldn't be a concern, but it is, it is something just for us to note.
I didn't know if that would make the kindergarten start that day more complex from your standpoint, given the proximity of the campus, but yeah.
Yeah, the, the voting is at the high school, so with that being said, with the proximity between that and Blanche Ames, we don't foresee it as being an issue.
And it's the state primary, the turnout for that would conceiv, typically be less than the national primary, and the national primary turnout was not overwhelming.
Fairly low, I know, yes, I'm aware.
Yeah, so it was perfectly manageable in terms of, you know, parking and logistics.
To have a PD day during the presidential election is brilliant, actually.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate the considerations there, for sure.
Yep, yeah, that primary should be fine. Okay, any other, anything else that we want to give feedback on, or does anybody, does anybody feel strongly about eliminating any of the options tonight, or do we want to just wait for the next round?
I would like to wait.
Okay. All right. A question, sorry, one more.
And I just, I just know, I want you to stop apologizing. Because this is why we don't ever vote on the first reading, ever, because it is way more complicated than people believe.
Yeah, no, I can see all the puzzle pieces, for sure.
And you'll walk away tonight and still have questions.
And I'm sure we will get feedback, which will be helpful for us to learn from other parents what's on their mind. In January, when we had the P date, PD day in January, I know it gave kids an extra study day prior to exams, whether or not it was utilized, it was given to them. Any concerns or feedback we've heard, I know for very good staff reasons and security reasons, we want to move it earlier in the year, any concerns we have around that, same part?
Honestly, we don't love that it's October-November, we never plan it that way. But the, sort of, it's not a perfect storm, it's just, it's coincidence. The fact that it's, there's a presidential election and our security training are falling in the same year, we were really restricted in our options, because we really agree with the town clerk that we need to have the 5th off in November, and also agree that it isn't in our best interest to have security training on that day. So wanting it to be early in the year, really our only other option was October, because September would be a very difficult time to add another day off. So your point is well-made, we don't love it, we really feel like we were restricted in having much leeway, and you most likely will not see that again. Because, you know, two PD days, the PD days, they're the only days that we meet with the entire staff in the year. So we meet on the first day, we have those two days, and then we never, until the following August, meet again as a group. That is really difficult for many reasons from a management perspective, so we don't love it.
Is there a reason why there's only two?
It's contractual. If we were to add a day, we would need to negotiate that and pay for an extra day of labor. That has not been something that the union has embraced to this point. And next year, we, it's a very difficult budget year, and we don't even have that option anyway. Okay. All right, anything else before we move on?
So just to recap, the two things to consider, conferences, combining the conferences, to have them all on the same days, and professional development at the start of the year, is that correct?
Yep, I think, yeah, those were the two.
Did you want to comment on the cost of the building, or do you?
No, I just, I, it's not gonna happen. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, maybe get some feedback on extending the winter break.
Okay.
That would be radical, Nancy.
I know.
It's not gonna happen, so.
It makes it later in June, it's hotter, but they don't like going in the cold either, if they're real.
It's like two weeks.
That would be.
Parents would be going out of their minds.
Out of their minds, out of their minds. Some would love it, who could make a longer vacation or travel plans, and others would.
But working parents don't necessarily have that off, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I know, that, it's out there.
Ask away. Sure. Okay, all righty. So next up, public comment. So we have a member of the public here, thank you for joining us tonight. So your question or comment, you just need to provide your name and address, because it goes in the minutes and in, in our record. And do we need a microphone, or?
There is one.
Okay, never mind. We just, we can make sure any of the audio for ECAT can pick up.
Hi, Lisa Dehan, 25 Squanton Avenue. I'm sorry to make you late, because I, if I knew the meeting you were gonna have next week, then I probably would have just saved my question for scheduling kind of purposes.
We're here for you, please don't apologize.
Just go for it. So my couple of questions is the flex block, I do appreciate that, it's sort of something to kind of add in. My questions would be, with time on learning, I know that Lisa just said something about, like, that the, the high school is already at their almost max of how much they have to have, and there's not much wiggle room. Does the flex block count as time on learning? That would be my, yes? Okay. And my other question.
Do we need that repeated? Sorry, can anyone, can people on ECAT hear her when she answers? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
My other question is, by giving up that amount of time, that students will be missing instruction. instruction, how will that impact, like, their homework? Because if teachers have to cover curriculum and they have to cover standards, if they're missing a chunk of time, how are teachers going to make that up? Are they going to assign the kids more homework and say, oh, you have this extra time, like, you have more things that you can do outside of school? I'm not familiar with the homework policy of the high school. I didn't see, it's not in the handbook anymore. I'm just going with what I'm seeing on my end. I can say that my daughters had homework every single weekend, except for five weekends since the September. So that's just a concern, that if they're giving them this extra time, like, oh, we didn't cover the curriculum, here's an extra project that you have to do at home, or you have this extra flex block to work on it, that would be just like a concern with going forward, because I agree, they need a break, they need time, but I think the weekends and vacation weeks, it should be off limits. That should be part of that break kind of time.
So first, no, I would not expect homework to increase, and that would be something that we would expect, I think, of all teachers, that it would stay consistent. This is a helpful information, because when I have my meeting next Wednesday, I can show you the number of minutes kids are in every class in our current schedule, and what the difference would be if we add flex blocks in various times. So I'll give you that data, if you can come. We know and I'll email it to you. Homework is a, is a different place, and I think that that is one of the things for the future of OA to look at, is a homework policy. And so I appreciate your feedback, and I will definitely elicit more parent feedback when we get to that.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That was very insightful, to hear other comments. I hadn't thought of the homework angle. That was very important, because I could understand where kids would feel that would come.
Well, I give it, and I, and I see what my kids are doing as well, so that's something like, fourth grade homework is a lot different than high school homework, but I do think that high schoolers are involved in a lot of sports, and they're staying up late, and they're doing all this, but going with what I'm seeing now of, of the, it's not consistent with per teacher. It's like, one teacher gives it, and then the next weekend, somebody else is giving something else, and then, then over vacation, you have tests coming up on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when you come back, and there's vacation that they're studying, or they're doing different work, and that's the part that, for me, sometimes there needs to be that break. So just going forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All righty. So next up is discussion and possible vote of MASC, Mass Association of School Committee Resolutions. So at the, at the MASC State Conference last November, the delegates voted on a new policy where, where resolutions from past years, let me just get everything out. So resolutions from past years will expire after a period of three years. So they're doing a look back to policies, to resolutions passed in 2019, 2020, and 2021, and are offering school committee, member school committees, the, the option to advocate for continuing some of these resolutions. So as a little bit of background, I'll have to say that I need to further educate myself on sort of what the implications are of a resolution not being sort of taken up again by the committee. So just for background for the public, Mass Association of School Committees is a statewide association of school committees, as the name indicates, and they, as part of its duties, delegates, every district can send a delegate to the statewide conference and can vote on positions essentially that the, the state association chooses to adopt. Those resolutions are brought forward by member districts, there's a resolution committee that vets them, and then they're put forward for adoption by the entirety of the membership of MASC. And the benefit of this is that it can help inform our legislative agenda, and it can help member districts rely on positions that have been formally vetted and adopted by the, by the state association when making decisions on a local level, or taking a stance, perhaps, on, on various issues that may come up. So with that, there were 17 resolutions that were identified by the state association from these three years that have not been, as they categorize them, accomplished. So some of these resolutions are a bit like fixing the world or boiling the ocean, where accomplishment is, is a little bit challenging to define. So more, more about, you know, taking a, taking a, a formal stance on certain issues. So what I'd like to do tonight, they did ask, they did ask member districts to, to consider reviewing some of these, and to see if individual districts would be interested in advocating to propose that these remain as active resolutions. So we don't need to vote on this tonight, we don't need to put anything forward tonight. I don't, I, in my time on the Eastern School Committee, we have not proposed resolutions, so it would be a new process for us. We'd probably have to just educate myself on, on the formality of the process. But I wanted to just review the ones that are open, and then if any do seem of interest or ones that we really feel like, ooh, that's something that we should, you know, maybe do a little bit more research on, we can come back later and revisit them. So starting with the 2019 packet, sorry that these are not super well-labeled, they're just coming from different publications, is the one with the blue and notes in small print, 2019 at the top. So I, the resolutions that are open in this are Resolution 2.
I thought they were all. Thank you. I was going through each one, I was like, huh.
Yeah, nope, it's not every single one of them.
I see.
Yeah, so we, the, the packet from them could have.
All right. I just had, yeah.
Yes, so.
So are these resolved if they're not still open? Like, what does that mean?
Yeah, some of them, some of them, like, for 2020, I actually just, for the 2020 excerpt I put together, because most of the 2021s were related to COVID, so they're no longer issues. So, yes, so presumably they're either no longer issues or considered resolved. So these are considered not accomplished, the ones that I'll, that I'll point out.
Not accomplished, still applicable, and they need sponsorship or they will not be reinstated.
Exactly. Yes, yes. And now, by not reinstating doesn't necessarily mean that these problems go away, or that...
Or reinstating doesn't mean that they go away. I understand.
Okay, right, right.
So the districts that put them forward no longer are interested in?
They may be, they may, so before, so the whole, the concept of, of having resolutions expire is new. So before, once a resolution was made and adopted, it was just sort of out there forever.
Okay.
And so there was, you could have this kind of backlog, so it's more, it's a, it's a bit of a housekeeping effort, but also to make sure that the state association is appropriately focusing its efforts on things that are still deemed to be timely and, and, I don't know, topical, right?
Okay. Thank you.
So we're, yeah, we're figuring this all out.
Okay.
All right, so, so this Resolution 2 is pertaining to educated diversity and professional licensure. You all can read the whole thing, but basically, the resolution that was adopted was that the MASC call on the elimination of the MTEL and MA Performance Assessment for Leaders as licensing requirements for educators, and that the MASC calls for the governance and licensure of professional educators to be vested in a board comprised of licensed And that has to do with the fact that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education prohibits practicing educators and school committee members from serving on that board. So this was, if my notes are correct, this was actually divided into two different resolutions, and they were both adopted at the State Assembly back in 2019. So that, that's one of them. So again, just, we don't need to dive too deeply into any of these today, just, just seeing if any of, any, if any of these do pique your interest, just send me an email, and then we can schedule some further discussion on them.
Committee members or us as well?
You as well. Yeah, if you'd like for us to advocate for any of these on your behalf, I'd be definitely interested in hearing.
Oh, resolution.
Your feedback, yep.
Please, yes.
School transportation, so.
That one is open as well?
That, yep.
Number three.
Yes, yep. So number three, and the resolution that was adopted was to promote greater competition for bus service contracts. The MASC calls for the creation of a working group to advise the legislature on best solutions to support greater competition and higher performance from transportation companies, and that in order to promote greater competition for bus service contracts, the legislature should eliminate MGL Chapter 71, subsection 7C, and authorize a deeper analysis into the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts. We know it. Believe that's still an issue, so.
It's still an issue.
Discussing. Not sure how resolvable that is, but I do know.
It's more resolvable than the next one.
Climate change?
Resolution, Resolution 4.
I would love to solve climate change.
Is that, is that?
Climate change is still, still not solved.
Okay.
Yes, that's another one that's open for our sponsorship?
Yes. So the resolution was that MASC call on Congress and the Massachusetts State Legislature to take swift and effective action on climate change to protect current and future students, and that MASC advocates for state and federal funding for school infrastructure need and emergency funding for disaster relief caused by natural catastrophes and extreme weather events.
I'm slightly confused how those things go together, but that's okay.
Resolution 5 is still open, so this was, or is on the list as well. This is full funding of transportation costs for students in foster care and state care. This is something that I, I know the Mass Association of School Superintendents discussed at the, at a recent event as well, and this is calling for the Commonwealth to fully reimburse transportation funding for children in foster care and state care, and that MASC advocate for the court to properly calculate and assume the full expense of providing educational services to students in foster care and state care, including assessments, regular day and special education services, out-of-district placements, transportation, and mental health services.
May I ask on that, what do we receive? Like, is it 50%? Or like, what's the zero? I just have no context of what the full funding versus what?
The town receives reimbursement for homeless students and students in DCF care.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution 6 is universal quality pre-K, pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts.
That's not met yet?
No, nope.
They must, they must be close, right?
Pre-kindergarten.
Oh, pre-K.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yes, so the red, the.
Got it.
The resolution was that MASC file or support legislation that would provide full capital and operating appropriation for universal pre-K and universal full-day kindergarten. And, yeah, so that's still open. Resolution 7, poverty in children, and the resolution itself is that the MASC will prioritize as a matter of public policy agenda and file for and support legislation to support the eradication of poverty among children in Massachusetts, and advocate for social and economic justice for students and their families, and then a list of what's included in that. Resolution 8, a resolution for access to menstrual supplies. So this one, the resolution itself is that MASC work with state and federal legislatures to provide additional funding to provide free access to menstrual products from the school nurse, and in restrooms and locker rooms. And. Resolution 9 is charter school reform, and this is, has some, a lot of details in here, but the gist of the resolution is that, that MASC seek legislative action to both address the deleterious effects of charter school funding on certain municipalities and school districts across the state, and approve a comprehensive set of reforms that are enumerated in here. Okay.
So everything in this packet was open for discussion, except number one?
Yeah.
Was, was it really?
Everything else is, yep.
I'm just making sure I got that right. It wasn't like.
Yeah, number one was the only one.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay. So for 2020, again, there were a lot more resolutions that were not flagged as needing sponsorship to continue, so I pulled them out of the packet. And so these are Resolution 6 from 2020, so this is the sheet that just has, this is the single page. So this is retention of Medicaid revenue. The resolution is that the MASC urges the general court to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing an adequate education. So that is something that currently goes to cities and towns instead of directly into schools, and then has to be allocated out. Resolution 3 from 2020, the School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution, this is one that I believe we adopted officially, and so the resolution has a lot of language, but be resolved that all school districts in the Commonwealth should guarantee that racist practices are eradicated, and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty, and staff. School committee members should ensure that school culture and that of every, that our school should ensure.
It should be.
That's a word salad. Should ensure that school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist and acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. Resolution 4 was lowering the voting age for municipal elections, and the resolution here is that sponsors call upon the Massachusetts Legislature to pass the Empower Act and take other means necessary to allow cities and towns to establish a minimum voting age of 16 years for all municipal elections. And then finally, onto 2021.
Why, why would this be a, a school committee resolution if it's about municipal election?
So a combination of, of reasons were given here.
I believe it's tied to the civics education?
Yep.
So they tied it to here, the promote civics engagement and civics education in the schools. So all eighth graders now take a civics course, so I think it's tied to, they're trying to encourage the opportunity for kids to then engage in civic opportunities in their local area.
And 11th grade?
And 11th, yes. Thank you. Eighth and 11th.
Yep. Yep, so a member of, or a representative and senator had, had introduced an act a while ago that would allow municipalities to lower their municipal voting age. So just one of the different ways that, yeah, that the state school committee gets involved. And then for 2020.
2021?
I'm sorry, 2021. Resolution 1, dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services. The resolution is that MASC support proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services. Resolution 2 is still open, this is the homework gap and Wi-Fi internet access. The resolution, it's two parts, that the MASC files for and supports legislation, legislation which seeks to provide free broadband internet to all K-12 students in Massachusetts, and support federal initiatives and legislation to improve national high-speed broadband internet infrastructure, expansion of the FCC's e-rate program, or any other steps to expand free access to reliable high-speed broadband. Resolution 3, IDEA Full Funding Act. Resolution is that the MASC calls upon the mass congressional delegation to reintroduce and promote the passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act. Resolution 4, recess, is that the MASC supports legislation, there are two bills referenced, calling for at least 20 minutes of uninterrupted, supervised, safe, and unstructured free play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from structured learning time requirements, and may not increase the total number of hours required in the school year for Massachusetts elementary school students. Resolution 6 is an alternative to MCAS. Five was not.
Five is not, okay.
Yep, listed.
That's one of the few.
I know. It's like, exciting.
Six is the alternative to MCAS, that MASC calls upon the legislature to establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievement, which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students, and accountability standards for public schools and school districts. Resolutions seven and eight were not identified. There was already.
That's right, yeah.
Resolution nine, prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. The resolution is that the MASC support legislation calling for regulations prohibiting public schools from using an athletic team name, logo, or mascot, which names refers to, represents, or is associated with Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific Native American tribes. And that is the end of it, so. I thought it was like, really interesting to look at sort of the scope, right, and span of some of the resolutions that have been brought forward by other districts and adopted. So, you know, as individual members, if any of these seem like things that we would want to, to endorse, you know, let me know, and we can figure out how to go about showing our support for these to be readacted, I guess, later in the year.
We talk about it now or not?
Yeah, sure, yeah, if there's anything you want to talk about now, yep.
I would definitely think the bus transportation.
Yes.
Is huge.
Where are you, on which one?
The.
The bus?
The foster care.
Okay, so.
The funding for.
Oh, the funding.
I think that was 2019. The school transporta, you were talking about the transportation one or the foster care one?
I was talking about the bus, the buses.
The buses not having enough competition?
Yeah, not monopolizing.
Yep, yep.
Yep, so, that was 2019, resolution number three.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep. Any others?
I think, on resolution two, on 2019, I think everybody is trying to do that. I don't know that there's a way to fix that, or if it can be, I agree, we need to do the, find diversity and all that, but, what are you supposed to do?
So.
Yeah.
But, I mean, maybe that's something that we can get behind, I guess.
I would almost rather see, maybe a resolution specifically around diversity from the board. I don't know if we want to.
There may already be one.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, there were, there've been different.
Oh, my god.
There've been quite a few resolutions. They're available online.
Yeah.
If you want to look and see, and there were quite a few that were not, that were, that were tabled at this past year's conference. So, that was, anyway, so, all of the, all of the resolution reporting from the past few years is available online.
What about Resolution three of which 20, 21, what was this, 21?
Which one?
Yes, the anti-racism one?
Yes, that I felt strongly about.
I feel like that's a pinnacle of our district, and.
I would agree with that.
That's our.
We're on this sheet. This is 2020.
Yep.
Sorry.
Dr. Cabral?
It's okay.
No, go ahead.
I can provide feedback after.
Okay. Nora, if you have a.
No, I, it goes back. I was, I just wanted to point out, to your point of diversity in education, this is specific to two items that contribute to diversity in education, specifically the elimination of the MTEL and the PAL system. Which is for licensing of administrators, and it is very similar to MCAS. We believe that there should be a standard, but it is a one-track system that, as Mask is pointing out, can unfairly restrict people because of that, and the second being the fact that licensure right now in Massachusetts is currently governed by the Board of Education, which are not necessarily educators, and calling for educators to sit on that board for different elements of certification.
So, that's.
So, it's just those two things about.
Right, but that's what I was saying, though, too, that, that I would go, I would continue with that, I would still want to endorse Resolution two. For, there's, so many people could be great teachers, and they can't pass a test, or administrators.
Or this particular test, which is not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily the, the precise indicator.
And I don't know if that adds diversity or not, but, I mean, if you, plus, there's, there's, I don't know, if there's a teacher shortage, I thought there was for a while there, maybe it still is.
There is. And an administrator shortage, yeah.
So, and I, no, I was in favor of, I'm just saying, I can't believe that we're still, you know.
I know.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of things that I can't.
But it's not, yes, no.
You know, climate change, we're still, that's going to be forever.
Yes.
I do think, having known some teachers who took a number of MTEL-related prep courses, it could be an unfair disadvantage for those who can't take the time or money to take those courses to get to that place. So, that could definitely be a challenge. Just in terms of putting them on those who are eligible.
Thank you.
Any other kind of initial comments or feedback? Okay. And I believe that they communicate, I think if, there's something about if five, if five districts endorse something, it, it goes straight to the November.
If five or more committees from two or more geographical mask divisions pass the same resolution, that resolution bypasses the resolution committee and goes to the body for a vote. Goes to the Board of Directors, straight to the voting members of the delegate assembly in November of 2025.
Right, thank you.
So, just let you know, if we have anything we want to do.
Yeah, yeah, if there's anything that you think we should, we should further discuss and take up as a committee.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I would just. You go ahead. No, please. Once we adopt one, what does that mean?
So, I'll look into that, because we haven't done it before. I would imagine there would be some work with then, kind of representing and advocating if, if it has to go to the resolutions committee. So, there is a resolutions committee that vets resolutions that come in. And it certainly, again, this is, I think, new to us, but if we, as a committee, wanted to introduce a new resolution, we have the ability to do that each year. So, we could come up with and vote together to endorse a resolution. We would come up with the language, and then it would go to a resolution, the MASC Resolution Committee. They further discuss, they can, they're very helpful with.
Verbiage.
Yeah, exactly, right, because they, you know, they want, they want to help make sure that what you're putting together, you know, fully communicates your intent, and that you're not going to get tripped up on anything. They'll check, you know, legislative and legal references and things like that, to get it in really good shape, so that at the, at the annual meeting, you know, people will be able to vote, and you won't end up in this spiral of, you know, 10 amendments being added on, or people debating little bits of language. And that did happen last, this past year, unfortunately, so.
Would you like a placeholder for a possible vote at the next schools committee meeting?
Why don't we wait and see if we get feedback? And then, I'll double, do you have the, the text of the email there by any chance, in terms of what the, the deadline?
I don't.
I'll look into that and just.
Do you happen to know the deadline? All right, we'll look into it.
Okay, yeah, so, we'll just make sure that we do want to endorse anything, that we give ourselves time to get it voted on and discussed.
We may need the placeholders to understand the implications.
Yep.
To learn his point on what it means to actually.
Yeah.
Before we vote, to understand what exactly we send ourselves up for, in terms of sponsorship.
Lynn, if you want to maybe, put a, put a placeholder for the next meeting, and I'll, I'll do, take away to better understand what the next steps of the process would be if we did decide to take up any of these.
We have to make t-shirts.
Sign. Get the glue sticks out in lobby. Yeah. The other comment, I guess I had, is I reflect on the evening and the great conversations we've had. I think it would be great if we do decide to support some of these, that we keep them focused around our mission and goals as a school community, around equity and inclusion and some of those components. So, climate change, while valuable, might not tie immediately to that, but things that we're starting to talk about around diversity and some of the, you know, anti-racism considerations and things like that, I feel like those are areas where it really leans into our values.
Absolutely.
So, it'd be good to think about that.
It's a great point, yes. So, I think, you know, looking at ones that tie into our strategic plan, that may tie into the goals that we, the school committee, set earlier in the year. Yep, yep, look for alignment there, that's a great point. Okay. Anything else on that? Alrighty. So, next up on the agenda, superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone, and the audience as well, that we are hosting a career fair, co-sponsored with MPDE, which is the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, here at the Blanche James Elementary School on March 16th. So, we're anticipating over 50 school districts being represented. We're excited to share our new space with them, but hopefully to also entice potential candidates to see our campus and our school. We will have opportunity for onsite interviews as well, so, we're really looking forward to that. It's the first time we've had it here, and we're even considering having our own in the future, because we've had such amazing feedback and questions from people who are not necessarily members of MPDE, that could even make this a broader scope. The next is that we are very actively working on the budget. Today, for the first time in the 11 years here, I put a "please don't disturb unless it's an emergency" today sign on my door. I've never done that, but we are really, we're really in a crunch here. It's a very difficult year next year, we do not have a lot of latitude, and so, we're having to be very creative, explore every possible option, really tear apart each individual line for tens of dollars here and there to put it all together. So, a huge shout-out to Andrea Starjevsky, who is a finance director, team of one, who is really partnering with me on all of this, as well as the E-Team members that we're, we're delegating responsibilities per department, per school, and per central office staff person. So, to bring that, there's no way I could describe how much information and number crunching that is, and she's doing just a phenomenal job. So, I really, really appreciate her efforts in helping me with that. Capital budget is coming up for review even sooner than the operational budget, and as a way of reminder only, we are focusing for the next few years, probably solely on technology and security upgrades, because we do have this security project going on. We don't want anything to be stalled because of funding, so, we are being really tight on our facilities and one-time, capital is the one-time spending, not recurring costs, of over $25,000 with a useful life of five or more years. So, we want to maintain the one-to-one devices that we've had, and the software and infrastructure that's necessary to keep it going, but we also are very much invested in prioritizing our security project on our schools. So, you're probably going to see those two items probably exclusively for a couple of years, which puts further constraint on our operating budget for regular facilities' needs that traditionally come from capital. Mrs. Pruitt, maybe we'll be talking about Dr. Mikey Fowler's presentation, so I'll let her do that. I don't know if she was planning on that.
No, she is.
No, I can, if you, okay. So, I did meet with Mrs. Starjevsky and Senator Timolty to discuss Easton's budget, Easton Public Schools' budget and legislative priorities on February 22nd. He was kind enough to come here to the district. We had a very good conversation. It was not surprisingly, a lot of the same constraints happening on the state level that are happening here, but we discussed a lot of legislative items that maybe are not tied directly to budgets, that would indirectly provide relief for us. So, he was as attentive as always, and we very much appreciate those efforts and the fact that he came here. He's always welcome. We, I have been asked, so far, twice, to provide presentations in partnership with Perkins Eastman on the neuroscience and impact of physical spaces on pedagogy and learning. And so, we have two coming up. One is in March, and one is in April. So, I'm really looking forward to those. We've already gotten together and prepared that. I think it's very helpful and important for Easton Public Schools to be out there, and for people to see what it is we're doing, and how we focus our instruction, and we want to be a leader in those spaces. And it brings a lot of attention to Easton Public Schools, and hopefully, people moving in for Easton Public Schools. So, that has been exciting and very rewarding, working with them, because I have a great deal of respect for the work that they do, and the value that they put on education, and not just looking at schools as buildings, which has, was huge in that project. And looking very much forward to trying to bust out of my office to participate in Read Across America tomorrow, and read to my little friends at Blanche James Elementary School, and one of the highlights of my year, and I'm very excited to be able to do that and to get that invitation. So, I would encourage anybody that has not been able to volunteer in that, it happens in March every year, maybe reach out in January or February next year to the school administration and see if that's something you'd like to do. We try to bring in volunteers from different professions and different areas of the community, and it is always a great event, and I just love being a guest reader, so, I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. That's all I have.
Only at Blanche James is our own not doing Read Across America?
This year? I don't know.
They do, but they don't have the, they don't have the volunteers come in like Blanche James does. They do, they do a lot of work around Read Across America.
Yeah, they, they haven't in the past. I had been running around to the three different elementary schools, and now it's just going to be at Blanche James. So, kind of like a benefit I hadn't thought about, but that is kind of cool, too. Just walk right through, not even over.
Walk through the rainbow.
Yeah, yes.
Any, any questions or comments for Dr. Cabral?
I actually do. Your presentations, who are they going to be for? Are they?
Architects. Architects and school leaders who are interested in potentially improving their spaces and have building projects in the pipeline.
If there were an opportunity to listen into one, I would love to hear you talk about it.
I don't know, because I didn't ask, but, I mean, I have my presentation, and we could, I could happily share it with you if you'd like.
I would love to learn more.
It's an area of fascination for me. I always geek out about brain development and how we learn, and this is right in that lane.
That sounds really interesting. And I love that you're able to contribute to Easton being a thought leader.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I think it's, you know, like you said, it's great for promoting our excellent, forward-thinking school district, and maybe attracting talent and attracting families.
Exactly.
Awesome.
It's a great way to, for other educators to see what we're doing.
Yeah. All right, next up, we've got assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt.
I do have four items for you this evening. The first is to share with, that we had a wonderful visit from Dr. Mikey Fallon at the middle school and high school this past week. Mikey Fallon, and I know a couple of you were able to, Dr. Mikey Fa.
Fowler.
Fallon. Fowler?
I thought you said Fallon.
Oh, Fallon. F-O-W-L-I-N, right.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you said Fallon, like Jimmy Fallon, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's my Jersey accent coming out, sorry.
I think it is.
You know, it's, it's interesting, I, I came out earlier today with Dr. Cabral. I said coffee for some reason, but anyway.
In fairness, he is from New Jersey, so we discovered that.
He is.
So, it might have wrecked.
That's a lot of forward.
Okay, we're unraveling.
We did bond over, over New Jersey.
Yeah, so, Dr. Mikey Fallon spoke to the high school as well as the middle school. He does a presentation called "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me." In the presentation, Dr. Fallon combines, he combined both his professional acting talents and his psychological training to take the audience on an experiential journey. He was extremely well-received by both, both bodies of, student bodies, and we did have a nice turnout from, from families as well. We always encourage more families to, to attend, and it, I know when we had our, our Equity Series a couple of years back, we, we definitely, that was something that we continued to struggle with. So, we go back and forth with, do we do virtual, do we do in-person? But, but he was really wonderful. I wasn't able to attend. I wasn't able to attend the two student sessions, which I'll explain in a minute, why I wasn't able to attend, but I did attend the evening presentation. And he just really, I mean, I just was in awe watching him, and I know a few of you-
It was a good turnout.
Yeah, it was, it was a good turnout.
It was a good turnout.
Yeah. So, and, and a shout out to Kelly Kavanagh for bringing him to the district. In her, she, she is very great at networking with other area principals, and he has spoken at other, in other districts. And she was able to bring that and in collaboration with our DEI Director, Carol S. Perez, who, you know, helped bring it down to the middle school as well. It was a great, a great, great opportunity for her students and staff and families. I do want to alert you two, and I'm, I'm giving you this information a little premature because Anne Weintraub and I have not really had time yet to sit and really analyze what this means for our district. But I do want you to know that as the Director of EL, and she and I both attended the changes in regulations for, from the Office of Language Acquisition through DESI. There was a webinar. There are changes. The first one, just so you are immediately aware of it, is that the Department of Office and Language Acquisition does, is highlighting the term ML, multi-language learners, which as you know, we have, we have begun that transformation of using that language. They are also beginning to use that language, and that is when referring to students who are or have been consistently exposed to more than one language. It's really taking a look at acknowledging students' first language and cultures as strengths. And they're really highlighting that. However, they are, for the term, for the sake of policy and procedures, they are continuing to use the term EL. But in other documents, EL for English language learners. But ML is, is the, the term that they will be transitioning to. There are changes in identification of ELs that we have to take into consideration and what that impact is for our, for our district, as well as the ELE, the English Language Program Development. And underneath that is development, implementation, and evaluation. It also, there are some changes in services, accessing to curricular and extracurricular programming and monitoring our former EL students or ML students. There are some changes in reclassification of ELs and power, parent empowerment. So, once Anne Weintraub and I have an opportunity to sit down and really hash out what does that mean for the coming school year, if you'd like an update on that. There's also a new guidance document that I could share with you, if that's something you're interested in reading. So, the other thing I wanted to share with you, like Dr. Cabral, I, I was able to have the opportunity to attend the National Superintendent Conference. And I did, I was able to, I actually was part of a, leading a session with, if you remember, when I went to Panama a year ago, we, I was, after Panama, sorry, after Panama, I participated in a year-long professional development opportunity with a national, a national professional development opportunity virtually through an organization called World Savvy. And we really looked at, how are we leading through difficult times? It was post-pandemic. It was the, the national, the national landscape was very challenging. And how do we come together and what are, what, what practices are we using in other states that are really working well? And how can we replicate that in the age of, of lots of controversy? So, we did facilitate a conversation with national, national leaders called Beyond the Divide: Fostering Community in the Space Between Freedom and Fear. And we were, we facilitated a conversation with three guiding questions. The first question was, how do we ensure that our education system is adequately preparing young people to be active and engaged citizens in a multi-ethnic democracy? We also talked about, how do we meet the needs of all students in a time of great polarization? And how can global competency serve as an organizational, organizing tool and framework for supporting democratic processes? So, it was great because there was actually somebody sitting in the presentation that said, "You're Easton, Mass., not Easton, Pennsylvania." And I said, "Yes." So, you know, again, just bringing Easton into the national light, I think, is really important. And knowing that both of us are working on that is just great for, I think, our district as well. And actually, Craig Davidson, our Director of Special Services, also attended the conference as well. And just from a national perspective, the highlights, the two major themes throughout the conference was the focus on safety and security. And so, Craig and I, at length, had a conversation about how we feel like the Easton Public Schools, and we actually talked with Dr. Cabral about this when we got back, how we're really on a nice track and heading in the right direction. So, it was, it was very affirming. He attended some more sessions on that, that he was able to bring back some ideas. And the other big focus was artificial intelligence. And I attended a lot, I attended many sessions on that. So, I'm working with Olivia Ramos, our, our Director of Instructional Technology, and the Tech Committee on what does this mean for, for, for our district? But it's actually really pretty exciting, even though it's scary, it's pretty exciting. So, just know that that's, that's on our radar. The last thing I wanted to share with you, and the reason I wasn't attend, able to attend the sessions with Mikey Fallon, was that my new executive administrative assistant started on Monday. Her name is Loronda Campbell. She is absolutely fantastic. She comes to us with a wealth of experience in neighboring districts, in schools, and in, at central office. And she is, Julie Schein, who was previously my, my executive administrative assistant, was able to come back and train her and is continuing that training throughout the coming weeks. And Loronda has just been wonderful and great to work with already. I look at Lynn, because she sits next to Lynn, and it's just been, it's so. If you're contacting my office for any reason, please, please welcome Loronda, as, as most of our districtists are already. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Chrissy?
I spend my days focused on AI workplace. So, if you would ever want to, I'm going to a conference next week.
Oh, great.
I spend all of my time on data and AI, so happy to chat.
Yes, excellent.
And share all of the things I just spend my time on.
Thank you.
Well, your conference sounded amazing, so I'm glad you were both able to go to that.
Yeah, it was great.
Super opportunity.
Yes.
All right. School committee notes. So, Nancy, can I start with you?
Okay, sure. The naming subcommittee has, continues to meet. We have more, we're still putting together a new brochure and getting numbers together and spaces together, but it is moving along. ECAT, the Easton Cable Access Television Group, we're having an upcoming contest. I don't know when it's going to happen. It's in the process. But they, they have all these little tigers wrapped. They have an ECAT ribbon around their neck, and it's very pretty and very cute tiger. But they need a name for the E-Cat. Thank you.
That's so clever.
Did you think it was us that was making them do a tiger?
So, Kim Pinkus and Dr. Cabral, and because I'm a member on that board, and there's, there's a bunch of stuff coming up with it. But it's really adorable. So, hopefully, yes, yes. Very cute. I also, next, I believe next Friday is the freshman dinner dance, so I want to wish those guys a good time. And also, Jackie, we miss you and thinking about you. Okay.
All righty. Lauren?
Is this the first meeting since February break?
Yes.
Yes.
Because that feels like a lifetime ago.
Two weeks.
Yeah. So, I, so what, what can I talk about? You don't have to if you don't want to. So, the Math Acceleration Academy
Yes.
was, was very successful, from what I understand. My son participated, and he had a great time. And I can't even imagine the, the work and the commitment that everyone put into putting like a school together for a week. Like, that was just amazing. And he really had a great time and got a lot out of it. And they had really, really fun specials that they did. That was in addition to just doing math all day. So, yeah, so that was, that was really, that was really a great opportunity.
Another is coming in April.
And there's another one coming in April. Yep. So, thank you to everyone who put it together, to the teachers, to the administrators, everybody. I can't even imagine how large of a task it was. What else? Mikey Fa- Fallon. I had the opportunity of going to the parent session.
As did your son.
As did my son, who-
An active participant.
Was an active participant, yes. Never met a stranger. And it wa, he was so entertaining and so relatable. And I would love to see him come back and speak to the younger kids. He told us that he does, he does have a presentation that he does for specifically third through fifth grade. So, I, I think it would be a really great opportunity for, for R.O. kids and maybe Blanche kids, I don't know, but, but definitely for the R.O. students. And I think that's it.
Kelly, any updates for this week?
Just a few. So, I won't touch on the presentation. It was excellent, other than, that's all I'll say. But a couple of things I did, we had the Human Rights Committee meeting this week. A couple of things going on there. They did suggest that they would be very supportive of broadcasting and sharing with all of their community, future events that we do, like the presentation on Monday. So, several of the community members who are not parents but heard me talk about the presentation and heard our student representative talk about it, felt that they would have enjoyed going as well and hearing Dr. Fallon's comments. So, I think that is something that they would be very happy to continue to share that information out. So, that was very positive. We are also actively on the Pride Event for June. So, as you get more information, we'll share that, but that will be in town. And I will provide more of that in future discussions. Kindergarten Information Night is next Thursday, the March 14th. And if anybody goes and wants to come say hello, I will be more than happy to meet them because I am starting my fourth child through Easton Public Schools. He is very excited to go after going to the Blanche James event. He tells me all about his new school all the time and to get on the bus. So, I need to officially register him now. So, I will be there. So, for any parents who are new to the school community, certainly happy to welcome you at that event. I know we'll have a lot of folks there. And then my last comment is, I am excited to participate in Read Across America tomorrow. I have not had a chance to do that. And I was very excited to see all of the community members who are participating. So, just seeing first responders participating, local community members, I mean, it's just fantastic. It's not just coming from school committee or from the principals going to each other's schools, but it's actually awesome to see some of the community members coming as well. So, it should be great to take time off and be able to go see the kids. And I'm going to let Jen talk about all the amazing sports events because she's actually been able to show.
All righty.
All right.
Great.
Oh, I want to wish the girls luck, though. Sorry. Tomorrow night.
All right. So, as promised-
Goalies.
We've got the winter sports report. So, so wrapping up their seasons, starting with the meat-based sports. We had two, two of our gymnasts qualified to compete as individuals at the state meet. We had one swimmer who qualified also to compete at the state-level meet as an individual indoor track. I lost count of how many went to the state meet, but I know we had four that finished in the top 10, which is a really great accomplishment. Wrestling, woo-hoo. So, wrestling. We had, our boys' and girls' teams had great seasons. Five girls and one boy qualified to wrestle at all states. The girls' team qualified as a team for state level. Girls finished 10th in the state as a team. They were second in the state divisional championship. And two wrestlers, Amaya Smith and Emma Andromolos? Am I pronouncing her name correctly? Thank you. They can, they qualified for and competed at the New England Championships, which is the first time OA has had wrestlers there. And Amaya finished 10th and Emma finished 12th. So, congratulations to, to all of those teams and athletes. Amazing job. And let's see, the rest of the sports, boys' hockey and basketball, both qualified for the state tournament. So, they wrapped up their seasons at playoff games last week that were really well-attended and just a great way to wrap up the season for them. And then, girls' basketball will play in the Elite Eight Friday night. It's a home game. So far, they've had home-court advantage for all of their games, although we hear their opponent is sending lots and lots of people, so.
And that is the district I live in. So, I'm coming out to everyone to say, "Go OA."
All right. So, get, tickets are available on GoFan. And maybe, maybe consider getting your tickets in advance if you're planning on coming out to support the girls.
There are already 400 tickets sold.
That's awesome.
And there's 1,000 capacity.
All right. So, tickets are going. Get them soon. And shout out also to Easton Youth Basketball, who has had a huge presence at the, the past games. It's been really amazing to see all these little boys and girls along the sidelines, and they, they do the good vibes for free throws, and it's just the coolest thing you've ever seen. Okay. Let's see. Not to be outdone, our music department is, of course, always, always active. So, the OA Jazz Bands, both bands competed in the Southeast Senior MAJA Competition, which was hosted at OA last week, and both earned gold medals, which is fantastic.
Awesome.
And then, there are both the Southeast District Festival is this weekend, and for the Jazz Bands, the UNH Clark-Terry Jazz Festival. So, best of luck to all of our musicians who are competing this weekend. And then, the robotics team is gearing up for their competition season. So, I believe they'll be heading up to Revere and Reading on a couple of different weekends coming up soon. So, best of luck to, to the robotics team. And then, let's see.
As evidenced by any ancillary noises you may have heard throughout this evening's meetings.
They are working hard. And then, I neglected, I will bring this up next time, but I know that we had several artists who had award-winning pieces in the statewide art competition. So, we'll get details.
OA and EMS.
Oh, great. Oh, I didn't really, I didn't see the middle school update. That's great. All right. So, we'll, we'll have an update on that next time. But, you know, great work. Our art department is incredibly impressive with helping students develop, you know, their best pieces. And then, other, let's see, so other activity in the past couple of weeks, the school committee, some school committee members who are part of the strategic planning process. We attended a strategic planning meeting last week. It feels like it was 10 years ago.
I've gone all about it. It feels like it was.
So, another, another really good, another good session. The committee has participated in giving feedback on entry plans for some of our key new personnel. Thank you for extending the invitation to the Mass Legislative Breakfast last week. I was able to attend, so it was great to hear what the Mass Association of School Superintendents has for its legislative priorities in the area and to connect with some members of our legislative delegation and sit with some other school districts and kind of, you know, hear what's going on with them. That networking's always really appreciated.
Thank you for going.
Oh, you're welcome. And then, upcoming events. So, tonight, the Easton Middle School had its, I believe, first DEI PAC meeting. So, if anybody has a middle school student and is interested in getting involved in that, keep an eye on their calendar or just reach out to- keep an eye on their calendar or just reach out to the school for more information. But I know they're certainly looking to get as many families involved as possible who want to be involved.
Open to all, open to everyone.
Okay, so not just EMS or?
No, I mean, it's open to all members of the EMS community.
Yes, okay, yes. Thank you for clarifying. Sure. And then the middle school has its Night of the Arts next, next Thursday, a week from tonight. We have a couple of early release days coming up next week. So K to 5 on the 21st and K to 12 on the 22nd. And then finally, the musical is coming up in a couple of weeks. So make sure that you get your tickets. They're going fast. Tickets are available online, and that, I think.
I have a question. How can someone from the community who does not have someone in the high school know about all the events that go on at the high school?
We have a district calendar on the first page of our website.
But it doesn't have like sports stuff.
Well, there actually is an MIAA app that I use for that that is probably the best place to get it because it's updated regularly. It's an actual app on the telephone, on your phone.
Yeah.
So that's one recommendation. And I believe they are, however, on the high school's calendar, on the high school page.
I don't think sports are, because there's so many. Yeah, it would take up the whole page. But yes.
But the MI, I, I find the MIAA app to be very helpful. Because it will give you alerts, like you have options for alerts and things like that.
Does Max Perks have it, too?
Uh, Max, MaxPreps.
MaxPreps.
And Arbiter Sports. Those are, they're a couple of different resources that are used. And then also-
If it wasn't for Jen, I wouldn't like know about it.
Well, there are also some good, some good social, you know, X formerly Twitter, the athletic department.
That's also true.
OA administration.
Know to follow.
Yeah.
All the coaches.
Well, just follow Mary. Follow Mary.
Yep, so for anybody, any members in the public who want to stay on top of information.
AD, the Athletic Director. Yes, she maintains a site. That's also a good one.
All good suggestions.
That, that was a good suggestion. X was a good suggestion.
Yeah, OA Athletics, all of the Rams High School. There are a lot of, there are a lot of Twitter handles for various administrators and departments within the district, so.
I try to repost them, but I don't do it with regularity because it really depends on any given day of the week. But following the AD is a great idea.
Okay, all right. Let's see, so any, any other questions? We're good there. So our next meeting is 21st?